Alrighty, let's call this meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Murphy.
Present.
Commissioner Bunting.
Present.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey.
Present.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Here.
Great, it's wonderful to see everybody here again. How long has it been?
They told me I didn't have to wear my mask.
Exactly, I was told at church that I didn't have to wear the mask if I was fully vaccinated. That's awesome. So, alrighty. Mr. Lumberman, could you give us a prayer tonight?
Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity for us to come together and consider these matters before us. Fill us full of grace and wisdom and an open mind as we try to do the best and operate in the best interests of the taxpayer, the taxpayers of the county. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Born and unborn. Alrighty. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
I did, you did receive an email about the U.S. Department of Treasury Coronavirus State and Local Financial Recovery Funds. So I put that under the communications.
Okay.
Adding it to the extras on the, out on the web. So that you could see that.
Okay, so that was from the U.S., what?
The U.S. Department of the Treasury.
Treasury.
Coronavirus State and Local Financial Recovery Fund.
Mr. Chairman, we're doing a presentation on that, the same thing, the process planning becomes late.
Okay, great. Alright, so we can just, we'll have it there then. Alrighty, anyone have anything else? And then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Bailey, second by Commissioner Bunting. Any discussion? Clerk will please call, well, we can do it the old way.
We can.
Yeah, so all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? We got everybody here and it's, it's been a more than a year then. Oh my goodness, good. Alrighty. Matt, do you see anybody online, public comment, or is there anybody that would like to make a public comment?
I don't see anybody at this time.
Okay, if there's anybody that would like to make a public comment and they're online, they can unmute themselves. I think it's star six if they're on a cellphone, or anybody in the room is welcome to make comment. Let's move on. So, I believe we have an introduction on a new staff at the Veteran's Service Department.
For the room, we're going to try to find a magic spot in the room here where we can have the camera on us and see you. This room is oddly full, and I'm feeling a tad claustrophobic, so. I'm quite used to this, but anyway, I really have a very distinct honor of introducing to you this evening the new Director of our Veteran Services. I'd like you to know that Ms. Nancy Bozer is Rodolfo approved. Perhaps that's all I have to say to you. You know that we've had some staffing challenges in there for a number of months, and Sue's just been doing the old work, if that's the right term. Rodolfo retired last fall, and then we've had some other staffing challenges, and so Sue has really been doing the heavy paddling there for a very, very long time. In our latest recruitment, these are very difficult positions to fill because, you know, when we came to you with some staffing issues, you could go full-time, what can that look like, and talking about the advantages of that. And we made those adjustments, and then with our latest recruitment, we got just a very good, very good crop of candidates. So once again, I know that I speak for everyone in that department, thanking you for your willingness to look at funding and staffing it in that way. And the Veterans Committee also passes them all, thanks, but anyway, I'm back for us. The last recruitment, we had a number of very good and valid candidates. And so we did a paper screening of all of them, as we always do, and then we have an interview committee comprised of Ken Davis, who's with the Veteran Services Committee, and I know a number of you know Ken. Also Sue Edmonds, she certainly should be able to pick her food, work partner. Myself, Ann Hewitt, as the. And interviewed four, I believe, very good candidates, but it was unanimous, and just without question, there's one candidate that rose to your top. And that candidate is Nancy Bozer. I've provided you her resume, so you could take a look at that. In my view, it tells a story, and it is a story that's best told by Nancy herself, because where do I know? Nancy's prepared to talk to you all about her qualifications and credentials, which only took about an hour and a half, and that was condensed version. But perhaps you can hear from Nancy herself, and maybe you stop, you'll be able to hear.
Promise I won't take an hour and a half, I'll probably just take like two minutes, so, because I don't really like talking about myself, but. I've been in the, I'm a retired Air Force officer in the Air Force for 25 years. I had the distinct pleasure of commanding at all different levels, from a squadron level up to. Under level, and I will say that you guys could sleep very good every night, because the airmen and the civilians that worked for the Air Force and all the military services, because I did joint time as well, are just remarkable people, remarkable people. Going out, I was a pilot, so we went all over the world, and so going out to these locations where there's nothing there, and you have to make something happen, these 18, 19, young, 20-year-olds, 24, 25, making things happen and making the mission happen, so it's just an amazing experience to be able to have that privilege leading these people. After I retired, I went into a small business and managed a small brewery slash mollynallying off course. It taught me a lot about working a different type of sector in the community and working for profit. And then my next job was working for a big corporation, so I kind of went the gamut. Going from military service to small business type and then to a big corporation. And I'll tell you, I've never been happier, even though this is due too, is getting back into the service community. So I'm very excited and I'm very thankful to Tracy and her staff, and for you guys, and for the Veteran's Service Committee, for allowing me to do this job, because I really feel back at home. And being able to serve our veterans and learn that part of this is going to be an amazing job, so. Very excited about doing that for my retirement. So, do you have any questions for me?
I'd like to emphasize once again, this is the latest example of people who have traveled and worked all over the world, who at the end of the line choose Gracha County is the place that they want to come and work. This is an all-star, this is a quality individual, quality officer. And she has chosen to come and work with us and our veterans in Gracha County. So, you know, we work every day to make this an attractive and desirable place to come and work and to live. We ask you folks to continue to do the same, to support your employees, to support one another, and as of this. So Nancy will be around, she shows up for work every day, and would be very happy, I know, to take your calls or for you to just stop in and say hello at any time, so. Thank you very much for the time. Thank you.
Welcome to the county.
Yeah, welcome aboard, and thank you for the 25 years of support for our country, thank you.
My pleasure, thank you very much.
Alrighty. The next thing, do we, we need a motion for a public hearing on the brownfield, I believe?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Bailey, second.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Smith. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion passed, we're in, in that hearing then. I'm assuming Jim, you're handling this?
Yep, yeah, I can start it off, Ryan's also here if you have any questions with it. What we're doing in this one, for everybody, is it's a brownfield redevelopment project that Gemini Capital is doing in Alma. It's a 220 Superior Street, which was the former Plaid Door store. And it's one that he's taking it, again, it's been labeled as functional obsolete, which it's easy to do with these older buildings, as we've had in prior discussions about it. In the case of this one, he's remodeling the first floor, which will be a barber shop and an office space available. Chose this time not to do the second-story apartments or living spaces above it. I just don't think it made economic sense to him, so at this point, it's just the first floor that's being renovated with it. Again, it's not a huge project, it's a total cost and it's 236,000. The amount that would be subject to capture and repayment back to them would be 63,496. Again, it's one that, because it's not having the second floor of living on it, it's one that the state won't, isn't participating in, in this case, it's just going to be the local brownfield authority, which is our local taxing authorities. So hence, it takes a while to pay it back, just given that it wasn't even on the tax rolls before, because I believe the Plaid Door was owned by a church. So now it's on the rolls, but for a small amount, it will be, you know, on for quite a while, so this brownfield will actually run 30 years. So it's a long-term payback that will be there, but again, it's all adding to the downtowns that, that we're getting, you know, buildings that have needed some tender loving care, to say the least, and then this will be another one that will be fixed up, brought up to speed and up to date, and I think will be a nice addition to Alma. Again, not a huge project, but one that definitely fits this brownfield qualifications. I don't know if any comments or questions, like I say, this is a pretty simple program with this one, but again, everyone you fix up, it always seems like, then, you know, it's like the next building next door to you. I think the owners take a look at it and say, wow, now I see something that, that, you know, yours doesn't look quite the same then, and it just seems like it keeps spreading up and down the street, so it's a kind of proof where good and bad goes up and down, in this case, is we're getting a lot of good. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them if there is any.
We're the final approval, aren't we, Jim? Has it been through Alma and I have to?
Yep, it's been through our brownfield authority, it's been through Alma, it's been through the DDA of Alma, because it's in the DDA district, and then now this would be final approval with, if you so choose to approve it.
Make a motion to approve this project, you've done a great job up there.
Alrighty.
Second.
We have to come back out of the.
Oh, okay.
Okay, alright, okay, we'll hold that motion then.
Will we, unless you have some more comments?
Any other questions or comments? Then we need a motion to go back to the regular meeting, I believe, and somebody could make a motion that we go back to the regular meeting and approve this. So moved.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bunting, to come out of the hearing and to approve this. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I oppose, nay? Pass.
Thank you.
So. Over here.
Why, we're waiting for.
Yeah, I believe we're waiting for Ally until 5:30?
I think so.
Okay, alright, so that'd be about right, why don't we do a Commissioner's Report, we'll start at this end, John?
At the Arcata Township meeting, Doug Merchant did a really good presentation. This was also our first in-person I've been to as a commissioner, so that was nice. But he did a really good presentation on the fire response districts, and there seems to be a problem in the southwest portion of Arcata Township, down along Ely Highway and going towards Washington Road, where people are saying, if there's ever a fire, call Ithaca, but it's Alma's responsibility. But they say, call Ithaca, or else the place is going to burn down before Alma gets there. So Arcata Township is forming a committee, and they want to talk to the fire chiefs, both at Ithaca and at Alma, and they're, they're wanting perhaps these zones to be redistricted, or the boundaries changed, maybe more in line to what the school boundaries are for Ithaca Public Schools, Alma Public Schools. So they have formed a committee, they're going to be talking to people. But they're, at our meeting, they talked about perhaps it's time for a countywide authority, similar to what is going on with the airport authority, because they are not happy, have absolutely no say about firemen's wages. It's all done, you know, the townships have to pay. So there was some talk of a countywide authority for that, or, you know, would the county be interested in that? I probably should have Doug come to one of our meetings and just present what he's talking about, he's pretty passionate about it. The only other thing that I've got to say is, we've got the airport committee, it's not moving quite as fast. We keep wanting to have meetings every two weeks, and they end up being every three weeks. But this coming Monday, we have three Zoom meetings scheduled, Monday afternoon, 2, 3, 4 o'clock, with different attorneys, and what their proposals would be, how much they would charge as far as the assist on getting the airport authority ready for some kind of conversion. So that's all I've got, any questions about that? Just for the fire authority, I think that's pretty much in place for Ithaca has, they've taken on their townships. And I only know this, I went to a meeting the other night, and Parrecton has lost their chief and some of their top people or whatever. And a couple of them, I guess, moved to the Ithaca and joined, just happened to move to Ithaca and join the fire department. My understanding how it was going to operate down there, and they're going to meet on Thursday about it. But if Parrecton decides to come in with this authority, they would have a station two down there. And then I think the fire authority itself would manage the whole operation. And what they're intending on doing is, a couple of our townships have some millage designed for fire already. So I think Dave Nelson was talking about 1.25, 1.5, something like that for the fire authority. And then what would happen is that, like in that case in your township out there, the same case down in Fulton Township. Maple Rapids covers some of it, south of Rainbow Lake, Ashley covers some to Poppi, Ily split right there at State Road, and so what would happen with that is the SEVs in those sections, if, say they took in, if Fulton Township decides to do this, they would have a person on the authority, they would have some voice in it. And then those sections there that Maple Rapids took over through the SEV, wherever their line was, that SEV, they would get that money to operate and run that place, that, their district. The same with that in Ashley. And coming north in some of my towns, Sumner would be the same way with Ithaca. But they would all be in the authority, so, and I think Ithaca, Sumner has some Crystal people in common, so the SEV, Crystal took care of $50,000 with SEV where the lines are, they would in turn pay them that SEV money that's taxed to them, you know, they would have that. So that's my understanding how it's going to work, Parrecton, I think, is going to bring this up on Thursday morning. But it sounds like they may want to go with this authority and have a second station. And basically, it'll all be run, they'll all be training the same, that type of thing, buying stuff together, and it would just be one authority. What is the township that's covered by Clinton County? Well, it'd be Washington, they get some in Washington, they get some of that comes out of Maple Rapids. They're in Clinton County, part of, it's just because it's closer to Maple, like really, it's the south side of Rainbow Lake. It's probably the first road to the north off the county line, that those guys, if you drew a straight line, they cover that out of Maple Rapids. I only ask because one of the things that Doug Merchant talked about in this presentation was there was some people who are in Gracha County, but they're now being covered by Clinton County Fire. That's right. Their insurance went way up, because they're further distance away from, and so he said that's a a sensitive thing that we got to be aware of. Yeah, but my understanding what will happen is that, like Maple Rapids will still cover that, except for Fulton Township. Now what they end up doing is they donate a little bit of money to Maple, a little bit of money to Ithaca, a little bit of money to Carson City, and they donate a little bit of money to Parrecton, so they're just paying three departments. So they're going to tax their township, say it's 1 mil, and I don't know what it brings in, but say it's $100,000, just for easy numbers. And if Maple Rapids has 20% of that coverage, they'll get $20,000 out of that millage to take care of the southern parts, they'll take care of the south side of Rainbow Lake up into Gracha County. Carson City will do the same thing in New Haven, they cover some of New Haven, and they cover some of North Shade. Carson City, I mean, North Shade's right up against the county line, and when you go to Carson City, right there, just going into town is the county line, North Shade's on this side. And so wherever that line is, it might be like Warner Road or something like that, or, you know, and so all the SEV to that side of Warner Road, Carson City would get that funding, but some of that comes, some of them come out of Crystal and catch the north half of New Haven. So whatever that SEV works out, that's how that's supposed to work out, and those guys will still cover that area, so nothing will change in protection. You know, it's my understanding of it, and that was just, we had met last Thursday, I think it was. Okay. Yeah, and that was the way it was explained to Parrecton about them coming in and who would take care of, you know, and how they would still be funded, like Fulton wouldn't write Maple Rapids a check anymore. The authority would cut that check to them for whatever the SEV is they're covering, the percentage that they put in. And the same with Ashley and Carson City and Crystal. And probably Alma too, the same thing there. But like I said, that was explained that way the other day. And we'll see what happens when they vote at Parrecton on Thursday.
Right.
Fulton Township, yeah. I don't know, Parrecton, they, I don't think they're going to get a seat on the board, it would be the township, because everybody in the township would be taxed for it. And they do have some fire millage now, they haven't established a number yet, and I think they really have to look at all the SEV that's in it, what it's going to take to operate. But the insurance aspect is separate from the SEV? Insurance would be, that's right, the insurance, they are, I don't know why that would go up, because the same fire departments, like Maple Rapids will still cover the south side, so if you were paying, everybody out there is like a class six or something, because there's, at Rainbow Lake, it might even be better, because you could suck out of the lake, but, you know, there's no hydrants or anything when you go north of Rainbow Lake until you get to the lake. But there's some houses on the county line road that Maple Rapids covers, so they would, they classify your house as far as insurance, so Maple Rapids will still cover them, I wouldn't see anything changing. It's just that Parrecton or Fulton Township wouldn't pay them for that little bit of coverage. The authority would pay them for the SEV that they're covering, but they would still get coverage out of Maple Rapids. I wouldn't, I mean, if they had the authority in place now, Maple Rapids will still come to the south side of Rainbow. Is my understanding of it, and they're going to cut the money up, and they'll make the determination on SEVs, depending on what the millage is. So I don't think it would affect insurance, it shouldn't. But I'm an insurance guy.
Alrighty, George, you have anything?
Let's see, I had a Commission on Aging meeting. And everything's going best as they can, none of their satellites have opened up yet, but now with this new mask order, that might start to turn around. You know, so, and finances are fine, everything's good. They're doing well as far as that goes. At a integrated, Gracha Integrated Health Systems meeting on Thursday, and we had a lot to talk about. Two years ago, the state was in a situation where they tried to privatize all the public mental health departments. That was fought back for many reasons, but one is that it would apparently exclude a lot of the clientele they have now, and make it very hard for, meant the mental health in Gracha County to do their job effectively, so. We will be getting, the first meeting in June, our board will be getting a resolution that will be sent on to the state urging them not to take this privatization up, so. You'll be seeing that in your package, so I just give you a heads up on that. Um, yeah, basically.
Ready? Ian?
I had a meeting with MMR, and also one with MSU, MSU has several projects going this summer, and I have not had time to be a part of any of them, but probably will more towards summertime. And also, I wanted to tell Tony, if you wanted to see the screen, as long as you go behind these two chairs, you can, we won't see you, and you can still see the square or the screen. Yeah, it makes it more interesting if you can see everybody. Just, yeah, can you see it back there, Ferris?
Yeah, I can see this.
Oh, okay, good. Okay. That's Tracy.
That's Tracy.
Pretty soon you'll see other people too. Okay, that's all I have.
Alrighty, Sam?
I met at North Shade last night, they're, them in New Haven. It's interesting, these windmills down there, they got this called RFI, I don't know what it is, but all the lights are going to be out, so it's not going to be like up around here where the lights are on. When a plane flies over, they'll come on, if they come within six and a half miles of their radius. And I don't know how many, it's like 3,000 feet up, if they drop below 3,000 or 4,000 feet, they'll, they'll kick these lights on, and they'll run for 25 minutes after the plane leaves, or anything leaves that area, if it's a helicopter or whatever. And so, but they're having trouble for them, and so if you go by there today, they think it's going to be a couple of weeks before they get this RFI thing fixed. And they have some internet problems, some fiber problems, so those are all stopped over there, they'll be off for a couple of weeks. And then we met, I think we mentioned that before, we met a couple of weeks ago on the salary committees, and then we postponed for two weeks, and I think it's next Wednesday? One of these Wednesdays, it's either this Wednesday or next, I think it's next Wednesday, that we're going to meet again, and and I think that's going along pretty well.
Alrighty, thank you. All I have is, myself and a lot of the community, and I think everybody is concerned about this coming out in the newspaper that, and nobody's heard anything about this officially, that they're trying to rezone a nursing home there in Alma to have unaccompanied minors from the border coming over. They would be supposedly, the rumor is they'd be 12 to 17 years old. And the public, I'm sure, wants to have a lot of comments on this, and want to be involved. And I'd also like us to, at the next meeting, take up our emergency declaration notice with the CDC rulings and stuff coming out, and it might be time to do something there. That's all I have.
Real quick, Chuck, is that, is that nursing home, I know it's the old Pine River one or whatever, is there, is that in, is that in the city of Alma, or is that in the?
City of Alma. It's on Warwick, the new part of Warwick going past the Elks.
Oh, no, it was, yeah, that's the old.
It's not many more than 10 years old.
No, no, that's, I thought it was the one on 46.
Oh, no. No, and.
I'd heard that rumor, and I thought it was 46.
So, so I think the community is concerned about that, and we need a lot of information on that. You know, I would be concerned that, they're saying 12 to 17, but if the majority of them are 16 and 17-year-olds, I wonder, you know, what's coming over with them, so there's a lot of questions.
Didn't Masonic own by that?
Masonic bought it, and George mentioned maybe, he, you know, I agree with you, I can't believe Masonic would allow something like that, maybe somebody else.
Sure, I just couldn't think that. Masonic being Masonic, the Masons, they would want to go for that, but they may have sold the building. Masonic being Masonic, the Masons, they would wanna go for that, but they may have sold the building to someone else. I don't know.
Or leased it.
We're all conjecture here, we don't.
Yeah, we don't know anything.
It's just conjecture, we don't know.
So if anybody has any information on any of that, please pass it around. I know, uh, we was at the Lincoln Day dinner over the weekend and Congressman Molinar's office knew nothing about it. I'm asking them to do some checking in. Uh, that would be John's district. All righty, um, is, Matt, is Ally on the line yet?
Yes, she is.
Okay, so let's move into that on the audit.
Good evening, everyone. Do you want me to go ahead and get started or did someone have any comments first?
I think, uh, Rob would just go ahead with your report and then we may have some questions.
All right, very good. So I am going to, um, attempt to share my screen here so that you can see the presentation. There we go. All right. So we will get started. As you know, our firm was hired to come in and do the annual audit. We did issue, um, our opinion on your financial statements. That opinion was an unmodified opinion, which is the, a clean opinion in which we believe that the information that you have been presented with, um, is materially correct. So that's the opinion you, you want us to give you. Within your report, um, I always like to clarify this for you because what you look at from, um, an operational standpoint as general fund versus what we look at general fund is for reporting purposes is a little bit different. So within the audited financial statements, the general fund actually includes the activity of these additional funds listed here. And the reason that we have to combine those funds into the general fund is because the general fund is providing, um, significant transfers to those other funds. So those funds are not self-sufficient funds. And it's just based on the accounting rules, um, how we have to go about doing that. So it's just a point of clarification for you. A couple of kind of high level, um, items to point out. Um, capital assets this year for the, um, for the county had additions of about six hundred and ninety thousand. And so a few projects make, um, up the majority of that balance. There was, um, work on the annex building. There was a driveway, um, done at Hubshire Park. And then there were also several vehicles purchased. So those were kind of the capital asset highlights for fiscal year twenty twenty. And then there was about four hundred and thirteen thousand taken in depreciation expense for the year. So this was one of those years where you actually added to your net amount that you report. Then for the drainage district, um, which generally has pretty significant, um, debt activity happening. It was actually a little bit, um, quiet of a year on the debt issuances. Um, so for fiscal year nineteen twenty, there was only one hundred and forty thousand in debt issued. Um, but there were repayments made of about one point seven five million. So overall, the outstanding debt decreased for the drains. Um, and they, they had a balance of about twelve point five million at the end of September. All right, here you can see general fund revenues, um, twenty twenty versus twenty nineteen. Um, you'll notice that the category with the most significant change is going to be property taxes. Um, so that increased this year. Within your property taxes, there is a little bit of timing difference, um, related to one of the reporting units within the county and the timing of when the county received dollars from that unit. And because of that, um, it, it shows like there was this large increase in property taxes for this year. Um, but really some of that was revenue related to prior taxable years. Intergovernmental revenues did not change significantly. Um, but we did see charges for services decrease. Um, we expected that and we have seen that at the majority of governments that we work with, um, due to the pandemic. Things weren't open and so those charges for services decreased as a result. And then there's some other miscellaneous revenues and then transfers in, in the general fund, and those did not have any significant changes this year either. There's a five-year comparison of those general fund revenues. Um, we exclude any kind of transfer ins or if there's other financing sources. Um, just because those, um, sometimes they're kind of one-offs and tend to skew looking at, at some comparative sometimes. So you'll see that revenues have kind of been, um, in that range of twelve to fourteen million. Um, depending on the year, they go up or down a little. Some of that really is, every year is going to be related to some of the property taxes and how those get reported based on timing. So for twenty twenty, total revenues came in at about thirteen point nine seven million. On the expenditure side, you'll see the general government category decreased this year. There's a few reasons for those, for that decrease. The first being in twenty nineteen, there was an eight hundred thousand dollar payment made to the drains um, to, to go towards paying down, um, some, some of the assessment related to the county. And then, um, for twenty twenty, there were fewer legal expenses incurred. And the cost of the courts were also down significantly. So those are kind of the three main categories that, that make up that decrease in general government expenditures. Public safety was up slightly this year, so that was, um, just over four million in total expenditures. And then health and welfare was down this year. That is going to be related to those institutional care payments. Those were down about one hundred and fifty thousand for the fiscal year. And then our other categories, um, capital outlay, other and transfers were all up just slightly. Uh, but nothing too significant or out of the ordinary to report in those. Here again, like the revenues, we can see a five-year comparison on the expenditure side. Again, we do not include the transfers out or any financing uses. So you'll see that for the past five years, expenses have basically been twelve million or higher. Um, so in total for twenty twenty, those came in at about twelve point six million, which was a decrease from twenty nineteen. And again, the majority of that is going to relate back to that general government category and decrease for those reasons previously explained. Here you can see the general fund revenues and expenditures in those years, um, where revenues are exceeding expenditures. Um, this was a year twenty twenty in which revenues did exceed expenditures by about one point three million. Because this slide does not take into consideration those transfer amounts though, this is not going to be the amount that your fund balance changed. Um, because we have to factor in transfers as well. So here, just looking at revenues and expenditures excluding those other items, there was, um, a one point three million difference. When we back out the net transfers, which were about a million dollars, then we get to the actual change in the fund balance amount, which was about three hundred thousand. And we can see that here on this slide. You can see from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, that bar increased just slightly. So within your, your general fund, fund balance, there are, are a few different categories. The most significant is going to be the unassigned, kind of that olive green color category. And that makes up about six point one six million of your fund balance. And then there are some assignments. Um, those are mostly going to relate to any residual amounts left over in those funds um, that I talked about back on one of those first pages that help make up general fund. So if any of those have balances, then they flow into this assigned category. Um, except the budget stabilization, which is in that lighter blue, that's gonna pull through as committed dollars. So that's kind of the majority of the makeup there for your fund balance. Switching gears, we'll take a look at the delinquent tax revolving fund. So here you can see the net position is the amount depicted by that top line. That was about seven point three million. And then the bottom line there in blue is the cash and investment position, which came in at about five million. And the reason for the difference between cash and investments in net position is because there are taxes receivable that are also on your balance sheet. So if you were to take your taxes receivable plus your investments, um, you get a little closer to that net position amount in total. So good balances, um, in that fund, you're very fortunate to have those there and the fact that you do not have to borrow for tax anticipation notes. Um, you, you generally have that cash on hand to be able to buy back those delinquents from the local units. So very positive. Looking kind of at long-term obligations for the county, um, here are some various categories. So the, the bonds that are outstanding, um, saw payments being made on them during twenty twenty. So overall, that decreased the amount of bond to less than five million. Then we have some compensated absences. So that's going to be for time worked by employees um, where they've earned time off and haven't been paid out for it. We figure out what that liability is. Um, so that did increase slightly. Again, that's a trend we're seeing given the pandemic. If people were not able to go places, then they weren't taking off as much time as in prior years. The capital lease obligation that's out there is, um, continues to decrease. So that was down. The net pension liability, you'll see that that was also down. It was just over two million in the previous year, um, and it's now down below two million. And then we have the other post-employment benefits, or for short, we always call it OPEB. You'll see that that amount actually increased this year. Um, it comes in at about two and a half million. Um, the reason for this increase really relates back to the actuarial assumptions that are used. So there's a discount rate that's used to help figure out what that liability was. And that discount rate changed this year. Um, and, and the reason it changes is because of how the investments are actually invested versus what previous assumptions were assuming they were going to be invested like. And so that caused an increase in, in the, um, net liability. All right, taking a look at compliance, um, so as most of you are well aware, we're not only looking at the numbers, um, but we're also taking a look at compliance. This single audit is where we take that deeper dive, looking at the federal dollars. So traditionally, we have been testing the child support enforcement grant, um, which we also tested this year. But in addition to that, based on the dollar amounts received, we also tested the coronavirus relief fund. And so I am happy to report that, um, even though you had that new funding, um, we did not have any federal award findings in either of those programs. Um, so a, a good job on the finance and the program side of making sure things were well documented and support was available to be audited. As far as internal control deficiencies, so we did issue a couple of material weaknesses. The first one is related to audit adjustments. We had two adjustments, um, that we proposed this year that were material in dollar amount. The first one related to the recording of special assessment receivables. Um, that was also an issue in the previous year. And then the second one was related to the delinquent tax revolving fund, um, and a cash adjustment. And that cash adjustment, um, was necessary because a check had been written prior to year end. And, and made it look like cash had been reduced. Um, but that check actually hadn't gone out in the mail or hadn't been delivered. So we needed to put that cash back and show an accounts payable to have that properly recorded at year end. So no case of, of anything like cash missing. It was just getting that transaction classified in the correct accounts for the balance sheet at year end. And then the second material weakness that we issued related to some other cash accounts that are held in the trust and agency fund. Um, there are some, some other miscellaneous cash accounts within that fund um, that are oftentimes, historically at the county, um, have been handled by departments and not necessarily the finance department. And so there were accounts this year that were not reconciled timely. And while maybe the balances at a particular point in time aren't always material, when you start looking at the activity for the year that runs through them, it is material. So we just wanna make sure that those, those cash accounts really are, should be part of the overall cash account reconciliation procedures that are handled. And our preference really would be that that's a centralized process, um, all handled within the finance department. That gives you really the best level of internal controls and separation of duties over those accounts. All right, in addition to that, we also did issue a separate letter, um, that contains required communication to you. Um, within that letter, there were eight different management comments um, of varying natures, um, some related to policies that needed to be updated. Some related to capital assets and the process for identifying additions for the year. Three that I just wanna touch on, um, first, one related to the tax collection and reconciliation process. As, as you're well aware, there were some issues, um, within that process and getting the final settlement done. And because that settlement process took so long to complete, um, that meant additional entries were needed. It meant that, um, things that should have been recorded weren't, um, in a very timely manner. So we just wanna make sure that really that tax collection and reconciliation process is taken a look at to make sure that that is done timely. The next one is related to preparing the schedule of expenditure of federal awards. As you're, um, finding out, there's now, um, more federal dollars out there for you to be able to spend. And so with that, we just wanna make sure that there are good controls in place over preparing that schedule so that when we get it, there aren't errors within the schedule itself. Um, something, um, as more grants have been available this year, that is something that many entities have been struggling with, making sure they're getting everything covered, um, and getting the right dollar amounts on that schedule. And then the last item, I just wanted to point out, there were a couple of funds that did have, um, some deficits in them. So Road Patrol, Front of the Court, and the Brownfield Redevelopment Fund um, had deficits that really are going to reverse themselves, um, with future receipts. Um, so that's more of a timing accounting kind of issue deficit. But the jail commissary did have a net position deficit of about thirteen thousand. And that's a fund that some additional work will be needed to make sure you can get that fund out of a deficit. And that's a fund that some additional work will be needed to make sure you can get that fund out of a deficit. And with that, I will take questions. But I did first want to just thank Chris and Tracy and their staff in the finance department. Getting through an audit is a lot of additional work at their place. But we really appreciate all the effort that they they put into answering our requests and pulling support. We did a little bit more of it virtually this year, so that's always a bit of a challenge. But the audit was filed timely. And again, we really appreciate all of their efforts in making sure that's done.
Ellie, you mentioned that the one material weakness. Did I hear you say it was also a problem a year prior?
Yes, so the special assessment is something that originates within the drain office. And for two years, there's been issues with that journal entry. So we've really recommended that the finance department maybe take a more pointed role in in working with that spreadsheet and making sure it's accurate and then getting that journal entry posted correctly.
Okay, thank you.
Ellie, with that drain part, who who puts that journal entry in? Is it done at the drain office or is it done in the treasurer's office or is it?
I don't know the answer to who actually enters that. Chris, maybe that's something you can comment on.
Historically, that is something that's been gathered by the treasurer's department and prepared there.
So Chris, are you looking at trying to help with that this coming year then?
Yes, absolutely.
Excellent.
Something else about the sheriff's department personnel leave time and it needed to be. The policy is unclear. Is that something that that you do, Mike? Or is that the policy to clear that up? Or is that something you and Tracy do? Yeah.
So I don't know what it said in the audit. Chris, can you answer that by chance?
I guess I'm just asking, is that something that it's done in the department? Is that something that's done by management? Is that something?
I believe what the issue is, is that the personnel contract doesn't quite specify exactly the leave policy that the sheriff's department follows. So when we go into negotiations here this summer, we're going to have to change the wording in that contract. So then it matches exactly how they're how they're operating.
Want to see him? I know how we do it over there. And two weeks ago, one April, October, first. By the end of the year, that fiscal year, six months apart, and it might be something that's causing a problem.
The the union contract leaves leaves it open to a little bit of interpretation. And the auditors want to make sure that there's no opening for interpretation. It's got to strictly say, this is how we're going to operate. I have a question for you, Ellie, if I could. Relating to the cash account reconciliations finding. When you presented that, it made it sound like the accounts were not being reconciled on a monthly basis by the finance department. Where that we did do that throughout the year. But when we pushed it up to the treasurer's department to sign off on it and update the GL, that part wasn't being done. So the general ledger wasn't being updated on a monthly. But you still reviewed that we did our monthly reconciliations to the statements. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, yeah, so we just don't consider a reconciliation complete until that entire process has been completed. So if the GL hasn't been updated and a final review hasn't been done, we don't consider that to be a complete reconciliation.
So it's accurate to say that they were being monitored on a monthly basis, but the process was not being completed.
Correct.
Thank you.
Ellie, I have a question. It's on page four of twenty one in the actual audit. And what it was is I see that that Mid Michigan Substance Abuse Commission. I'm wondering what five counties that was. Maybe I should ask the press or somebody in here, what are the five counties? And somebody sits on that board. Does anybody have that answer? No, it's Mid South Substance Abuse Commission. Anyway, we give them, it shows here, we gave them twenty five thousand five hundred and ninety four dollars. But according to the budget book, it's going to be forty nine thousand four hundred and fifty six thousand this coming year. Does it say? I wondered how you came up with that. Was that in with the stuff that you were checking or?
So that amount is linked directly to your trial balance. So that's what the county recorded as an actual expenditure for that fiscal year.
Okay, I just wondered where Mid South Substance Abuse, because I've asked where the money goes. I know we've given money to substance abuse. And I've asked where exactly was it going? I find that it's going to Mid South Substance Abuse. So Chris, whereabouts do you mail that money to?
We don't even receive that money. It's directly tied, well, we do on our books, but it's directly tied to the state's liquor tax refunds that they give to the county. And I don't remember the exact five counties, but this has been a question that we we've addressed several times a year that we contract with them to provide the substance abuse for a percentage of the liquor tax that we get from the state of Michigan.
Well, in the in our budget book, like when we go over the checks and stuff, it shows that we've sent them money before.
Right.
Does that go?
We get quarterly payments from the state and then we pass along their portion to provide the service.
Okay, so you sent it right to a bank or do you send it to whereabouts is it going?
I'd have to look that up. I can do that during the finance or and and address that during the finance meeting if you would like.
I think that would be good to clear up who that's actually paid to.
That is the name of the nonprofit Mid South Substance Abuse Commission.
Where whereabouts is it at? Is it in Graca County or?
I believe it's in Mount Pleasant.
It's where?
I believe it's in Mount Pleasant, but I will I'll pull that up in the finance committee.
I'd like to know on that. And it shows that we're going to pay, I think it's, well, forty nine thousand. I don't know. I can't remember. I can look it up here in a minute. Is it fifty thousand that we're going to pay them this year? Or forty nine, might as well say fifty thousand, forty nine thousand four hundred and fifty six thousand. Is that what we're going to pay them? Do we just automatically give all that money to them? Or do we give it to them in lump sums?
It's on a quarterly basis. They bill us.
They bill you?
Yep.
Okay, can we? I'd like to see a copy of the bill.
Okay.
Here's where it is, Jan. It's a it's in East Lansing. And it's within Clinton, Eden, Graca, Calhoun, Jackson, Hillsdale, and the Wani Counties, Chiwasi, and Ingle. Group develops a comprehensive plan for substance abuse treatment, rehabilitation, and prevention. So they must be setting up a plan for us to use. We pay this operation to do it. And here's a board they have. I don't know any of these folks.
So we do get a copy of this bill, Chris?
Yes, we do.
Okay, I'd like to see a copy of those bills.
And that's okay to do in the finance meeting so we don't hold Ellie up.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
I think that'd be great.
Okay, I have a few more. I have questions. I've kind of wrote them on my my book here. So I'm going to go to each page, but if somebody else would like to take a turn while I'm going to my.
All right, Jan, I had one. Ellie, I show on page three dash eight of the book, general obligation bonds, four million eight hundred and three thousand nine hundred and ninety four dollars. Are those the bonds that we use the money to pay up our debts to the repayment system or make payments on it?
So there is, hang on just one second. A hundred and seventy five thousand of that is related to capital improvement bonds from two thousand and five. And then the remaining of that is that two thousand seventeen general obligation bond, which yes, I do believe that was taken out to to pay down the pension liability.
And in, as I remember, it's been said that 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 started at like six and a half million. Just under seven, like six point eight or something.
Yeah. It was six million seven hundred and thirty thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Basically, Chuck, it was done to fix the rate.
Right, yeah. Get us back in a D C.
We don't want to pay every year. Every year. Didn't know until they figured it out.
Okay, Ellie, on page four thirty, four dash thirty. I just, I I'm believing that you kind of covered this already. This is a credit risk investment.
I'm sorry, what was your question?
Okay, the county does not have a policy for credit risk. So I guess I'm asking, what's what does that mean?
I think you're referring to money on deposit, Jan?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes. It's the money that we put into the, you know, the money, extra money for our general fund money that we put into the banks. And we do not have a policy for if anything would happen to the bank. I know that there's got to be a lot more lot more counties than us that has a lot more money than us that puts their money in banks. So what are you suggesting on that?
I don't have a particular recommendation. We work with many clients that don't have any formal custodial credit risk for their investments. That's something that if the board wants to include that in their policy, you certainly can. So that's really, when we look at it, so that paragraph above talks about the deposits and gives you more explanation about what that credit risk is. So that's really if the bank were to fail, is your money protected? So kind of looking at the FDIC insurance portion. So if you wanted to look at custodial credit risk for your investments and how you're going to limit funds between institutions to manage that risk, you certainly could.
Is there any private insurance available for such a thing? I'm assuming FDIC's CEDR program.
It's a CEDR's.
It's a CEDR program. What it is is that if you have, I think you're half a million now in FDIC. And if you have a million in there, they farm it out to another bank. It's in a CEDR program. So
It's all covered.
It's all, yeah.
Automatically covered when you put it in the bank. Because we because they're covered by a public act called CEDR's. And it and it that protects our money.
Okay.
Backed up by the federal government.
Yeah.
That, well, just reading that, it doesn't sound like you're you're saying that we're not, we don't have the money protected, Ellie. Is that?
You're saying we don't have a policy that says we got to.
Policy?
We don't have a policy, but most people don't. Because it's already protected by CEDR's. It's redundant.
It's it's like five hundred, just briefly, you know, but it's like it's five hundred thousand. You get FDIC insurance on, I believe it is. It used to be two fifty. I think they raised it to five hundred. But our banks here locally belong to the CEDR's program. So if you had a million dollars you put in the bank up here, five hundred thousand would be guaranteed by somebody else. It would, and it would go like you could put it in with your wife's name. I mean, they break it up. So it's it all wouldn't be in your name type of thing, but maybe maybe Isabella would hold some of it. You know, if they're in a program in the CEDR's program, so they spread that money around. But like commercial would be only in hook for five hundred. You know, but if you lost, but then the government would back that up. And if you had a million and Isabella went down, the government would back up the CEDR's program of that five hundred thousand.
I wouldn't count on the government backing us upright these days.
Well, there ain't nobody better. Well, we can put your name down. You could, I I guess they got lots of money to print it out.
They're going to print another four trillion. We're going to be up there close to forty trillion. I don't think they can back us, but I could be wrong. Been wrong before, but working my way down through this. Excuse me, this was the other thing I was going to ask you. And I I should know this answer because I think I've asked it before throughout the years. That can't we, couldn't we take some of that money, like if we have an extra million dollars and put it in a two year bond or a year bond? Or is that not good to do that?
That's our investments. We estimate that all every finance meeting.
Yeah, but I'm saying about the extra, like the money that we're putting into the bank now that we don't have security on it.
The money that, there's two separate piles of money we're talking about. We're talking about money that takes the county from month to month. That goes into like, like there's a diamond public account that runs through commercial bank. That takes care of that. Then by your investment report, that's all of your delinquent tax money and anything over it, all those overages are put into.
Okay, so what I'm saying is that when you look at the report, here, the one that Chris makes, like it shows like we have eight million nine hundred and ninety nine dollars. I I think we're setting better today than we used to be years ago. We didn't, you know, we were sitting pretty, pretty shallow on money. It seems like we do have a lot more money in the banks between the tax or the.
Delinquent tax fund.
Yeah, the delinquent tax money and general fund. I just wondered why we didn't put more of that into it.
Well, I think she's putting about as much. I can't answer for the treasurer or or Chris, but there's a balancing act about how much you're going to put away in a C D because they're locked in most cases for a couple of years or a period of time. And you have to have a cash balance that you're working on constantly. That you're always paying checks every month you pay out.
You must turn four or five billion over.
Ellie, are you saying with this statement that we should have a policy? Is that what you're really saying?
It, I'm not really saying anything. It's just saying that there is no policy that governs that. So if it's something you're concerned about, then yes, you should adopt a policy. If you do not have a significant amount in investments and it's not something you're concerned about, then you're you're probably fine.
I have another question too, of hers, but I think I'm going to look it up in the in the past budget books that you've done for us. I'm wondering how much money. I was talking to Chris the other, I think yesterday was. We took out a bond for six point five million dollars. And then also with wind turbine money, we had another three point five million, which was a total of ten, I think it's ten point five million dollars that went to MERS. Yeah, remember, we went into a closed session. And back when we, everybody was asking, what did we do with all the wind turbine money? And I've been telling people right along for several years now that a lot of the money from the wind turbine money went into MERS for the retirement. We didn't get a paper on it. You took, you handed the paper out. We talked about it and we handed it back to you. I kind of wish that we would have called, kept that money, I mean, kept that paper. So I'm going to check that. I've also got it wrote down in my notes. I just have to dig them out out of the. I've also got it wrote down in my notes. I just have to dig them out, out of the closet. But I wondered, that's something else, that's something you probably couldn't answer tonight. So I'm gonna dig through these and spend some time on it this summer when I have my school time off and check that out. Exactly how much have we given Merz since two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen to this point? So other than that, I think I'm about done. Do you have any questions, you guys? We have guests in the, in the audience.
We, it would be, have to do it under public comment.
I think on the, usually it used to be during the audit, anybody could comment or ask. You should be able to because we work for you. You're the taxpayer.
I guess we could allow it.
I have a question about the wind turbines that she's talking about with a friend of mine that lives north of Blackbridge. His address is Blackbridge, it's Isabella, it's Milton County, up on River Road. And three, four months ago, probably, bumped into him. He told me he got a thousand dollar check from the township or the county. They gave him a thousand dollar tax return check. He doesn't have the food from the wind turbines. Why would they give you a thousand? He doesn't have any. On two, he has just two acres beyond, off River Road. And he said, yeah, they give everybody, everybody got a check like that because of the wind turbines in that area, in that township of Henry. Every house has saved a thousand dollars. That's what he's saying. His name is Mike Dos, somebody.
I've heard of other people too that's got money that don't have turbines, but they get cash.
It would probably depend on that township ordinance. I suppose that might be possible.
Did it come from the county? Did it come from the?
I would guess it would come from the wind turbine people.
We're not paying out any money.
No, we're not. We're taking a lot of money off the wind turbines, cash. Now, the wind turbines, the company pays, the turbine, turbine, what is it, the, the, so much per year.
Tax.
And plus they pay the landowner.
Yes, they pay tax to us. Personal property tax.
Right.
No, no, no. The, the company pays, they set it, they set a value on it. And then it depreciates every year. Personal property tax goes down every year. That's why we're involved with a lawsuit. They try to accelerate that personal property tax. But it's paid down every year. You can, we have folders, Greater Grassheds, they got them, tells you everything that every county's gonna, every township's gonna get, how much, how many turbines they got, what the rate is. They know what they're getting next two years from now. They know what it is unless we change it in, in the legislature.
And then on the side, they pay the landlord or seller.
They pay the landowners. And then, and what happens, and, and I only know this, I have a family member that had a farm. They didn't have a turbine on it, but they had, they paid them, they paid like flicker. They paid to go on their property to put it in. Had a drive across, when they, when they put it in, they took out a big piece of ground and then they made it back to a driveway. They went down there, worked on it, and they got it all done. For lines. They didn't get, they didn't have no turbine on their property, but they paid them, like the next piece over. And so my wife's family got some money like that. Matter of fact, she just got a check here the other day. And that was from a, that was from a turbine company. From the tax, we do know. And, and you can get it, you can get a sheet. I don't know. We have the sheets here. Greater Grassheds has the printing.
Yeah, they, they should be releasing the next year here, any day now.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We've taken in forty-nine million since two thousand twelve, I think. There's a report that Greater Grassheds puts together that has broke that all now.
When you say we.
Well, we.
Everybody, that's the townships.
Thank you. You think it is, we paid that.
I, I, I got you.
People are gonna say, whoa.
Hey, fire departments, we pay everybody. That money is all broke down on personal property. So we, I've had people say, why does Carson City School get money out of the, the new towers over there? Carson City kids go, live in that district. They live in, they live in North Shade and, and so that school gets some of that money. The same with Alma. There's no turbines there, but Alma School gets money, you know, from the township. And so that, it looks like we're taking, we're just the managers of money and it's all sorted out. And they have a breakdown of it and we get that every year from them.
Right. If, if you go to the Greater Grassheds website.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a spot where there's five P D Fs about Grassheds County. And I believe the fifth P D F, if you click on that, it has a breakdown of where the townships, the schools, how, how it's all divvied up and.
So that, that forty-nine million dollars that we've taken since twenty twelve, it's not an extra money saved, it's spent.
Well, you know.
Where's the township?
We were paying all of that before twenty twelve. We were covering all that to fire the police that you said, the schools.
Any millage, you know, they have to pay the millage wherever the wind turbine is. So Alma Schools, St. Louis Schools get some millage. What else? We've got Greater Grassheds and, and Agricultural. The Grassheds County has a millage and we collect like one point four to one point six million dollars a year roughly. It varies, yes, that we can spend here.
Yeah. It's divided up all over the.
Well, like Mr. Lumberman says, it is on their website. It, it, it's in a P D F.
It tells you.
Okay, can we move on? Then anyone else have any questions for Allie?
Oh, I think I'm done. If I have anything, I can always call you.
Well, thank you very much. And if anybody does have any questions, I'm sure they can get ahold of you.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks, Allie.
So let's get back on the agenda here. We skipped around a little bit. We're on L. The Consent Calendar, Board Minutes, Communications, Recommendations from Committees. Does anyone have anything they want to pull out that board and, and talk on? Or can we? Okay, moved by George that we approve the consent calendar. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by, I heard Commissioner Lumberman first. Any discussion on there? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay, once passed. Then we're on to. We're on to, Tracy, you're up.
Well, again, everybody, good to see you. The department head reports are included with your meeting packets. Of course, I always welcome your questions before, during, or after a meeting about those. Sam mentioned the Elected Officials Compensation Work Group Committee. Indeed, that work is moving along. The next meeting is scheduled for next Wednesday, a week from tomorrow at one thirty P M. We pulled together a great deal of information for the committee, but there was some additional information that the group would like to see. That's comparative information, not just the salary comps, but also information like, is there a jail? How big is the jail? How many miles of drains does that drain commissioner oversee? How many records does a register of deeds or a clerk handle? So just trying to give an idea of the, the scope of the work done in each county. So we're pulling that together and happy to do it. You folks have heard about the, the desire of the state and the legislation that Senate bills three fifty-two and three fifty-four to waive restaurant inspection fees this year, an effort to help out restaurants a little bit in rebounding. We're, I'm meeting tomorrow afternoon with Marcus Cheatham as well as my counterparts in Clinton and Montomb Counties. We're just gonna talk about the, the ideas that they have, talk about the, the program, try to flesh out some details. I will, of course, report back to you on that. The, the net effect of this, because of course we, we have to continue to do these restaurant inspections. As it ends up being a cost shift back to, to us locally. So we just need to take a, a look at what that looks like and just make sure we're all of one mind about that. Chuck, you and George, I'm sure, have a great deal of information about that. And in fact, I think that you did a report at the last meeting about this concept. There's a little bit of news on the wind turbine taxation issue. Indeed, no, we do not yet have an opinion from the tax magistrate on the case that was heard in the fall of two thousand nineteen. Yes, heard that right, two thousand nineteen. But we're, through the work of the Emrec and Emrec attorneys. Senate Bill four four one was introduced last week by Senator Daley. That's co-sponsored by Senators VanderWaal and Lowers. The bill's been referred to the Senate Economic and Small Business Development Committee. I have forwarded to each of you this afternoon a, a copy of that bill so that you can review it after this discussion. Certainly will be looking for your support on that. I'll talk with Chuck about what we might present to the rest of you by, by way of support and, and effort, our, our visible support of that. The bill specifies, well, it deals with really the two primary issues in our litigation, which is first the true cash value of a wind turbine. Whereas a dispute is, is the true cash value of a wind turbine, what it costs to build the thing? Or is it the cost to build the thing minus grants, federal grants that the companies received to, to offset the building costs of those? We certainly have what we think is a pretty commonsensical opinion about that. And indeed, I had provided you folks an overview of that litigation, I don't know, a couple of months ago now, and reviewed these issues with you. This also specifies and outlines a the depreciation schedule or the factor that is to be used. And for purposes of this bill, we selected the tax table that was in effect back in two thousand eleven or was in effect at the time that the projects were approved by us and many other government entities. It's the table that was there when we started, when we approved these projects. It was changed in two thousand eleven. I'm not entirely sure how that got changed, but it was certainly done without local government input. So that original table has been plugged into that bill as the table that we, we hope will be adopted. So again, these are the, the bill addresses the central issues in our, our litigation. And frankly, after ten years of trying to get these things resolved and in all the cases that have yet to be tried and the one case that's at, what, nineteen or twenty months to get it finalized, it's time for a legislative solution of this. So we, we hope that the, the big utility companies will step up and meet with us and try to get this worked out. I mean, it's, it's time. So. That is really what I have. Of course, we've been working on the American Rescue Plan, trying to understand what that thing says. And I will do, I've got some slides that I can use to try to help advance your understanding of that. And we'll get to that issue here in a little while. So that's what I have for now.
All righty, thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, Tracy, in, in, in the light of the recent developments with being able to, those that have been completely vaccinated and had waited their fourteen days, they do not longer have to wear a mask. My question is, what are we doing at the courthouse? Has anything really changed? Are we still wearing masks? Or how, how, how are we going to attack that?
Yeah. George, I'm in discussions with Jennifer Wood on the court side about that. And there, there, our thinking is this, that there's been a little bit of confusion and some criticism of the C V C about, you know, how they went from kind of all on to nothing in what seemed like twenty-four hours. But you know, we're still learning a lot about this. We don't know who is vaccinated and who isn't vaccinated. We know that folks who are vaccinated can contract the illness still. There's a great deal to learn. Jennifer Wood and I are of a mind that, and Jennifer's here, she can speak to this also. Sorry, Jennifer, I didn't mean to refer to you. Didn't realize you were here. But of a mind that for now, we just continue to proceed very, very cautiously. And that's been our M O throughout this, that we err on the side of caution if an error is being made. We would like to continue, it is our plan to continue to require masks while in common areas. So that's moving through the hallways. And, but continue also what we had decided early on that inside of offices, department heads and elected officials could make their own decisions about whether staff would need to wear the masks when they're inside the office, just in contact with one another. So, yeah, getting, continue to keep an eye on it, aware of the latest guidance, but again, proceeding with caution. Jennifer, anything you would add to that? I don't want to, to misstate particularly inasmuch as I'm also speaking for you.
No, I think, I think.
I could be wrong for you.
No, I, I think you spoke well to it. I, I'm in agreement at this point. It's, it would be incredibly challenging to differentiate between who's vaccinated and who is not vaccinated. So I think we'd need some more guidance on, on how to approach that before we can make that change overall.
Of course, I do have a card here that says I'm vaccinated. And the date, that would be, you know, show it's past the additional twenty-one days.
A couple of things. One, at our last Board of Health meeting, it was discussed that only thirty-five percent of Grassheds County has been vaccinated at this point. Now, it might have been better now. I don't know, but it's been a couple of weeks. But at that time of our meeting, which was the twenty-fourth. So we still got sixty percent of better people that haven't, in Grassheds County, haven't been vaccinated.
And the biggest amount of people that were vaccinated were in St. Louis.
Yeah. Yeah, well, that helps because of the prison. They're all vaccinated there. So I think, I think you do have right of concern. I, I've, I've been kind of waiting for some guidelines for, especially the Open Meetings Act and those types of things now that we're getting all of us back in a room, how that's gonna look. And I'm sure that Stoker's looking at it, probably Max looking at it. And so I would probably appreciate, and the board, I'm sure, would probably appreciate any guidelines as soon as we can get them to know what we need to do.
Are you talking about the health guidelines or Open Meetings Act guidelines?
No, I see, but right now, we're under, we're under Open Meetings Act Zoom-type situation. And so I know Chuck just mentioned he would like to look at that emergency order. But if we're still under the, the conditions that we have been under, that would be a, a, a point that we need to talk about.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll bring that to you at the, the next meeting. I mean, you're fully in compliance with the Open Meetings Act right now by virtue of that local order. And you will have the, the choice or the decision as to whether to continue that. We, we can have that discussion at the next meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Tracy, on that Open Meetings Act though, isn't there, like, let's say for instance, we would have had thirty people that wanted to attend the meeting tonight. What, what would we have done?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the last of that, John. There's quite a bit of echo.
If, if thirty members of the public wanted to come and, and sit in here and listen to the meeting, what, what would we have done, you know, if we had them lined up in the hallway? What, because we're, we're prohibited from that, right?
Yeah, you know, we, we can handle that in a variety of ways, John, and that's certainly something that we've thought through. First of all, by virtue of the fact that we make these meetings available on Zoom and that there can be two-way communication, that people can be seen and heard, that is considered folks have access to the meeting. In that way, as an aside, John, I would suggest to you that the public has greater access to these meetings than they've ever had because they can do it from anywhere, from the convenience of their home and so forth. But that's an aside. If we did have thirty people come in and absolutely insist upon being present in the meeting, we can do a couple of things. We did this with the, the report that we had about the airport. We can ask that two or three or four. We can ask that two or three or four representatives of that group. Come into the room and sit and sit six feet apart. And I would suggest to you. That based current health guidance. That it would be, we would want to ask that they continue to sit six feet apart. What we could do, although it would be difficult to throw it together very quickly. Is we could set up a Zoom connection for folks and they could sit in the Circuit Court courtroom upstairs. There, it's quite a large room and folks could sit at some distance from one another. So I respond based on the facts that you have given and the scenario that that you have provided. But the bottom line is is that we have a number of tools at our disposal. We've thought them through. We've had a chance to. A a chance and a need to utilize those tools over the last year. And we would respond to really one way or another to whatever the situation is. But the key is, and I know I'm going on at length, but you know, we we thought about this. The key, of course, is that public have access. And access, you know, we're long past the point where access means that folks have to sit in the room. We want to do that if we can, but the idea is that there be the two-way communication and the ability to. Just to communicate with you, to hear you and to be heard.
But also with the CDC declaration, if they've been fully vaccinated, I don't know how we could keep them out of this room if they wanted to come in and. And and communicate, you know?
Well, you know, I you can with your local declaration. So you might want to consider, even if you don't, you know, agree with any of it. It does give you a tool that you can apply to a circumstance that might arise. That you want to handle in a particular way. Let me just clarify too, Chuck, that CDC provides guidance, but we take our directive. From the Department of Health and Human Services, which, by the way, did not immediately. Adopt the CDC position just because the numbers here in Michigan were a bit different than elsewhere.
Thank you. Alright, sounds like we'll have quite a discussion at the next meeting.
Tracy, I've got one unrelated question. Are we expecting the first tranche of federal money before the end of the month? And and is it approximately going to be twenty-five percent of what the total?
No, I'll go through all of that with you again, but for now, I think it's safe to assume that we would get it before the end of the month. There were initial timelines provided, sixty days from some date. Which I assumed would have been the date that it was signed into law, which was March eleventh. And no, the 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 guidance indicates that we'll receive the first tranche, a new word in our vocabulary. Will be fifty percent and that we get the other fifty percent. Twelve twelve months, a year after we receive.
You don't have to spend it all.
Right.
They got it, but you don't spend it.
Right.
Alright, any other questions? Then let's move on. I believe Jennifer, you're up.
Can everyone hear me okay? Thank you. I'm here tonight asking for the board's approval. Judge McDonald has recently. Appointed Kelsey Hilliard, who is a criminal clerk in the District Court. As a magistrate and that also requires the board to approve that. So that's what I'm here. Asking for tonight. As you may or may not know, Dennis Avon has retired from his position. As the District Court Administrator. He was acting as a magistrate and Kim Becker has also resigned from. The magistrate portion of her duties. So we're down to one magistrate at this point. And Judge Judge has chosen Kelsey Hilliard as. Another magistrate. So we have more than one person to cover. Those duties and I'd ask for your approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I'd make a motion that we. Allow the judge to appoint Kelsey Wheeler as a magistrate of the sixty-fifth B District Court.
Alrighty. Motion in a second. Any discussion or any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Open held today, motion passed.
Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Alrighty, next up, Parks, Peter Little.
Yeah, I'm here, guys. Hello, how's it going?
We don't see you. Are you on cell phone maybe?
No, I'm here. I'm just, oh, here it is. Starting my video right now. Hi, guys. Here we are. So. Yeah. So what we have here is we, last August, when our millage passed in two thousand twenty. There was a portion of that park millage, the language. Talked about how a portion of our funding would be set aside to then be redistributed back to local municipalities for recreation projects. So. This is something that the Parks and Recreation Commission and myself have been working on for quite a while now. Knowing that these funds would be would become available. You know, once that millage passed in in August, we really moved forward with trying to finalize this plan. So. What this is, is this is the municipalities within Gresham County that, you know, pay. Pay towards that Parks and Recreation Millage. They can then apply for that. And these are the guidelines that we came up with in the application that they would fill out. To apply for those funds. We modeled this after Charlevoix County. We looked at quite a few counties that were doing similar things. Ingham County has a similar program for trails. St. Clair County has a program where they also distribute money back to municipalities. It seemed like this one in Charlevoix. Was most appropriate for our our park system. So hopefully, it's self-explanatory. And if I if there's any questions, I'd be happy answering.
I just want to say, Pete, my district is going to be very happy to hear this. I'll make sure I make copies and get it to them right away.
Yeah, and and this, you know, once approved, this will be posted on on our the Gresham County website. And of course, if folks could help spread the word, you know, folks are going around to to municipalities, let them know that this is.
So is the eighty thousand going to be available annually or is this for a two-year cycle?
Well, so so that's kind of, that's up to us to decide. So so the millage set up to twenty percent, but ultimately, it's up to you guys. To decide that amount. This is the amount that the Gresham County, you know, the Parks and Recreation Commission recommends. For this year. But we have the authority to to change that, you know, who knows, maybe we all of a sudden have. A bunch of important projects that we have to do in the county parks and and we might say, hey, we we really, you know, can't can't. Afford to to put that much aside. So so it's up to us.
Alrighty, any other questions?
Nope, I just want to say thanks, Pete, for giving this. A chance. I know that my area had been very concerned for a long, long time.
Yeah, Jen, you know, this is this is something that's come up over the years, you know, our our millage. You know, has has changed, the language has changed over the years. In two thousand and. Four, when it was initially passed, it only specified. That the funds could be used in in the two county parks, the Reed and Hupsher County Parks and and just those. When when it was renewed in two thousand and twelve, we changed the language to say. Gresham County owned parks, so that enabled us to expand our park system a little bit. And so this, I think, is just another extension of that. Expansion so that we.
Oh, be great. I don't think, like Wheeler Township, I think they just want bathrooms, but you know, it's kind of hard to. You know, I mean, they put a lot of money into a park. It's just hard to keep coming up with extra money. Anyway, I'm sure I'll thank you for them too.
Pete, you need us to make a motion to formalize the eighty thousand.
Yeah, yeah, I think too. Well, one, we're, you know, approving this this program. This is the first time we've ever done it. So. Yeah, then then a motion to approve that amount that we can move forward with this.
I'd like to so move that motion.
I'll second.
A motion by Commissioner Lerman, second by Commissioner Bunting. Any discussion?
Pete, I just had a question. The eighty grand will fit this year, but I think it's something that you want to look at next year. And really, I don't think you want to lock this in at eighty grand a year. I I think, you know. Eighty grand for this year, you can figure you can afford that. And then what you guys are doing, but if you have something, go ahead or whatever, you need extra funds next year. So somehow, we don't want to make sure we don't want to lock this up as an eighty thousand dollar every year thing, you know? And and then maybe next year, you guys sit down as a board and say, you know, we got ninety thousand dollars this year, or we got sixty thousand. You know, and then we would approve that amount next year. So.
Pete, this eighty thousand. That we're talking about here, you guys would, the Parks and Recreation Committee would disperse those funds next year, correct? You would take the applications this this year and disperse those funds next year.
Yeah, that is correct. And it is also going to be done on a reimbursement. A level. So they'll have to, you know. Buy buy whatever it is, you know, the the new basketball, you know, hoops and then submit a receipt. And then, you know, we can see that the money was spent for recreation and and then the money will be sent to them.
Any other questions?
Do I need to amend the motion so it's one-year increments?
Yeah, I I think so we're not locked in.
Read what I have.
Yeah, why don't you read back what we have, Andrew?
To approve the process and application for the Parks and Recreation Village funding. From local municipalities with funds available up to eighty thousand for two thousand twenty-two.
Of these parks, so all the old parks. And they all have a part with this summer improvement on the parks. They added the receipts and they added up to more than eighty thousand. Where is it going to?
I think they have to apply for.
They have to apply for.
Yeah, they're gonna have to, as the way I understand it, they have to apply this year. Apply this year and it would be for next year. And and we're talking about the budget here year that. We're talking to apply by October, prior to October first. Correct?
Yeah, yeah, well, they'll have, they can submit them up to October first and then there's a. Couple of months window that they can submit them. I think it's up till December and then that gives us, you know, a couple of months in the winter to review the review of the projects and then to award them so that they would know in the spring.
Okay, so I believe we're ready to vote on this. All those in favor, aye?
You have to do a roll call for money. Don't you, I think?
I think we're approving the policy.
Okay.
Yeah, we're approving the policy.
Everybody in agreement? Alright, all those in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, nay. Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
We're. Up to. Chris, I believe you're going to handle this merge discussion. On the O P E B.
Yes, sir, I'm I'm available. Yesterday, Jan and John and I met later in in the workday. Commissioner Lerman, I think you put together a plan on how to approach this. Is that something you'd be comfortable sharing with the board?
Sure. And this is just a thought. I I, by the way, I did email Marnie for prospectuses for the different funds. She didn't send me that. She sent me a. One-page sheet. But. The. Managed plan that the state has. It had a large portion of privately managed money in it. Nearly twenty percent of the money was privately managed. I have a little bit of a bias against that. I find that funds like that can be. Difficult to get out of in turbulent market situation. And that the fees on those portions of the funds can be quite high. And on the one sheet that Marnie did send me. The expense ratio is about twice as high for that managed fund as it is for the all the other funds. So what I told Chris yesterday is that. If if it was all up to me, which it's not. I would probably go half into that managed fund. And then the other fifty percent, I would manage towards the bogies that the state. Says that we have, we have to have so so much of the money in equity, so much of the money in bonds. And Chris did say that it would be fairly easy manage. As far as us making sure that we're in compliance with the amount of of we need to do. So. This was just Chris and I BSing back and forth. We were just talking at that and I just said, this is how I would do it. But I didn't get the prospectuses. And so that's that's really what I wanted to see is, is that privately managed portion. Is it very illiquid and is it a high management fee inside that? So those those were my concerns and those were my ideas as as we were talking yesterday.
Chris, what's the drop dead date on this?
June twenty-fourth.
Right, that's that's when it would roll over, but we can make a change at any time. We can make a change on June twenty-fifth. But on the twenty-fourth, it's going to roll over.
Yeah, it's going to go into the real, into the regular Mears retirement type. Situation. It's not going to be many. We can manage it by taking it back out, I suppose, but. I I I'd like your idea. I think it's a good one. Do you want to just wait for the next meeting and decide?
At least you'd have a prospectuses. I should have.
Yeah, that's what. I think that's a good idea. Yeah, I like it.
Okay, excellent. Any further questions?
I guess I have one, not even a concern, but just a thought. We're just all passing through here. Chris is passing, Chris is going to retire soon. I want to make sure that we're, these are the employees' future money in retirement, you know, and what happens, I'll continue to pay them. We're in a pretty good shape with these guys right now, you know, we're ahead of the game with them and we're paying our management as far as. We're paying our updated fees and things like that to kind of keep things going. Kind of a, I think we're on top of this pretty good. I. I don't want to get so structured where we're managing it. And then all of a sudden, we have a change. And somebody, you know, I said, well, you guys decided this five years ago to do this and nobody took a look at it and you're tanking, you know, so. I think it's something we've got to look at every year, got to get it. Maybe even when they come and ask them what they think, how our stuff's doing compared to what they're doing. That type of stuff. I just. Today, we can probably do this, but. Maybe two years from today or five years from today, we can't.
So I hear you saying that we should, in part of this. You know, look at it every year, a drop dead date or so.
I think so, you know, and and if there's people in the, and he said it every quarter.
I was gonna say, it should be every couple of times a year, I would think.
I I that's on my own concern, you know.
That's solid.
Today, I don't have any concern about it. But five years from now, all of a sudden. Have a change in the board, people quit, people, you know, whatever, you know, and then nobody's looking at it. It's these guys' money. No skin on mine. Yeah, I just.
Say, we can take a look at it at the next meeting, you'll have a.
Have you had the prospectuses?
Better, right?
You know, as long as we got a handle on it. And and they'll come once a year and update us how we're doing, whatever, you know, and maybe they'll have.
You say that you're. Bring your expertise here, so.
Yeah.
I'm listening to the expert.
Well, I have ideas.
Alrighty, then let's move on. And this is just, we're pretty much putting this on every meeting, discussing the process of distributing funds received under the American Rescue Plan. Tracy, I believe we're getting some more guidance on this.
Yeah, I'd like some. There are some things that I'm prepared to talk with you about, provide some additional information. You know, we've been talking about the American Rescue Plan Act, the dollars that are coming. We know how much is coming. But the information we had received about how we can use it was a bit vague. Quite a bit more clear how we could not use it. I indicated to you that we would be getting some additional guidance on. I'd indicated to you that we would be getting some additional guidance, uh, on May tenth, and indeed that did, uh, come in. Are you able to see, am I sharing my screen right now? Hello?
No.
Okay. How about now?
Hello?
Oh, isn't that great? Okay. Uh, well, I'm clicking on everything. Let me try and get technology is just great until you put it in my hands, right? Two, screen three. There we go. How's that look? Yes?
Oh, there we go.
Very good, very good. Matt, your computer is great. You just, uh, you've got some user problems here, but, uh, yeah, we've been talking about the American Rescue Plan Act. As I, as I said, we were being promised some additional, uh, guidance on, I misspoke, it was Monday, uh, May eleventh. And indeed, that, uh, additional guidance, uh, did come in. We've been spending the week or so since then, I say we, I myself, so my friends, you know, everybody frankly who's looking to receive some of this. We've been, uh, looking at what are those details? We've been looking at, uh, an interim final rule, which is about a hundred and thirty-four pages. We've been looking at the Social Security Act, section six oh two, six oh three. Um, I'll recommend that, uh, you do that. If, if I get mad at you, I'll say, here, here's the Social Security Act, section six oh two, six oh three. We also gone to the U.S. Department of Treasury, uh, website and our variety of documents there. So let me go through, through some things with you. First, a little bit of a review, some numbers that were previously presented to you. About sixty-five billion is going to go to counties nationally of that one point nine billion to Michigan counties and just shy of eight million to, to Gracchett County. Again, uh, you had, uh, asked these questions, Commissioner Lemberman. We're to get half of, uh, our allotment, not later than sixty days after enactment, which again, the president signed that into law March eleventh. The second payment is to come no earlier than twelve months after the first payment, so about a year from now. And we have about three and a half years to spend, uh, all of that money to figure out what you're going to do with it. Again, it must be spent by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Prohibited, uh, uses, as I said, this, this has just been clear. We're not to do tax cuts, uh, in order to, uh, utilize this money and it's not to be deposited into any of the pension funds. We will be required to do reports, uh, audit reports to the treasury, uh, at various intervals, explaining how this funding has been, uh, has been utilized in our community. It's, uh, our plan, Chris is in mind, that with, uh, every proposal uh, or every concept, we, uh, we make sure that anyone who requests it can tell us exactly how it fits under the American Rescue Plan Act requirements. And just making it very, very clear that that nexus has been established. So we've gotten the additional guidance, uh, as of about a week ago. And there is some additional language and, and this is, there are a lot of words here. But it's just basically to respond to the public health emergency or negative economic impacts. To provide government services. To invest in water, sewer, broadband infrastructure. To transfer the funds to a private nonprofit organization and some other entities. And by the way, I'm going to elaborate on each of these in a moment. And of course, premium pay to workers performing essential work, uh, during the emergency. And again, we need to, uh, think a little bit more expansively about who that, that move is, but again. So, um, the, the new guidance, uh, came to us in the key resources. I, I want to make sure you have these. And by the way, I did, uh, send to each of you these slides early this afternoon so that you can look at them, at your leisure, uh, after this evening, but we will have gone through them together now. If you go to the website of the Michigan Association of Counties, they offer a little bit of information. There is, uh, the link to get to them. By and large, though, they just refer us to the page of, uh, that, uh, of the U.S. Department of Treasury. And that's where you're going to see most of the information, all the information actually that we have found. There are a variety of documents listed there. The two pages I found most helpful, if not scintillating, were the, the fact sheet. That's just two or three pages, so that one shouldn't kill you. The interim final rule, however, it's a hundred and thirty pages, a little bit repetitive. But digging into that, uh, did shed a little bit of, uh, light on some things. Um, although I will admit that I got about halfway through it and I think I decided it was time for a nap, but I got what I needed. And then I mentioned the Social Security Act. This is where this thing has been codified. The Social Security Act has been amended. And we'll find the, uh, A R P, uh, reference in section six oh two and six oh three of, uh, of that act. So those are your resources. And everything I tell you tonight, although I do have a good imagination, I will not have imagined and I hope not made up. I am drawing from these resources, hoping to distill them and making them a little bit, uh, easier for you to understand or more accessible to you. Certainly to aid you in the decision-making that, you know, you're really going to have to do. So, I listed up above items one, two, three, four, five, six, but it, it, the, the information indicates you can utilize these funds to support the public health response. And where this, uh, May eleventh guidance became helpful is that they then, they provided a variety of, uh, some additional text. They provided a variety of examples. And under the support of the public health response, you'll see, uh, a variety of things that, uh, fall under. These are illustrative uh, of, uh, permitted uses under this broad public health response category. That goes into, uh, second page, at least for this purposes of this presentation. And again, you can see the list. No need to talk about each of them individually, but again, this is why I provided you the slides. Get proposals or think about how you would like to approach this. You can refer back to this. Some of the language is fairly specific, but an awful lot of it is fairly general and, you know, whether or not that was by design, as we go along, I think I'll be making the case to you that, uh, this really does, uh, does benefit us. Further continuing under this public health, uh, service, uh, are your behavioral healthcare needs. Fortunately nowadays, we understand that behavioral healthcare is healthcare. So, uh, that is, uh, mentioned. And again, there is a list here that, uh, illustrates the sorts of uses that would be permitted, uh, with, uh, with these funds. So warm lines, hotlines, I know about. Warm lines, uh, was a new concept to me, but makes these are the things you learn when you read federal stuff. A, a little, little bit random, but important. It's also okay to use these funds for payroll and government, uh, covered benefits expenses for certain categories of individuals. Seems like, um, kind of a small detail, but frankly, those things can be, can be helpful. So, so that was, uh, public health, public health. The second, uh, addressing the negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency. My goodness, you know, that's, that's a big one. Pulled some language out and then emphasizing, uh, further emphasizing some language under each of these. Bottom line is, under this category, it, you, we can assist workers and families. We can ass- assist small businesses and other businesses. And we can look, uh, to the, uh, public sector and the public sector needs. So a lot of language there. Assistance to workers and families makes sense. Supporting small businesses. Boy, we've been talking a lot about that and hearing a lot about it, that. Tourism, travel and hospitality, you know, we hear about the, uh, uh, airline industries, hotels, that's just, just every, every business that has to do with having fun. And then, um, the, the public sector. And I think maybe we haven't been hit terribly hard quite yet. But, uh, there's, there's really quite a lot of, of flexibility here. So, um, you know, that's, that's really the big one. And I think that this is where, what you'll really, uh, sink your teeth into. The next category, uh, well, breaking those down. Excuse me, the next category, serving the hardest-hit communities and families. Health disparities, um, investments in housing, educational disparities, promoting healthy childhood environments. The literature makes it clear, particularly the interim final rule. Uh, there's considerable discussion of, let's look at the, how this pandemic, the, the economic impacts, the health impacts, uh, hit certain population, uh, and certain, um, uh, groups harder than others. And, uh, the emphasis, uh, it is their hope that emphasis would be placed on trying to, uh, uh, even that out a little bit or provide additional aid or specifically to, to folks who seemed to, uh, suffer disproportionately, health-wise, economically, uh, any, any way. But so serving the hardest-hit communities and families, that could be rural communities as well. But just thinking through and analyzing, what are the hardest-hit communities and, uh, a great deal of support for emphasizing aid to these folks? Next, uh, to replace lost public sector revenue. Through this, uh, we, we can use this funding string to avoid cuts to government services. So if there was such a drop in tax revenue, for example, that we felt that there are just some services we cannot continue, we could utilize this funding to kind of fill that gap so that we could if, for example, uh, tax revenue went, uh, cut, was cut deeply and we thought, gosh, we just can't continue to, uh, provide those services for veterans that need so much, well, we could, um, we could backfill or, uh, fill those gaps with this funding. Whatever, uh, if we are unable in any way to continue to provide valuable public services, there's some overlap there. But again, um, and just making sure that there isn't anything that we might do here, measures that we might have to take that would then spill over into, uh, slowing economic recovery. An example here in my mind is if we say, gosh, we just can't afford to keep our permit staff any longer, the folks over at the Department of Community Development. And, you know, we just got to let them go and there are a lot of reasons why we wouldn't do that. But i- if there was such a thing, then uh, we could, uh, that's really going to impact folks' ability to move forward on their construction projects. Uh, anything that, uh, where they're building something or they're moving earth. And, uh, so we could, uh, use these funds, as I understand this, to continue those services because, um, to not do so would hamper the broader economic recovery. Next category, providing premium pay for essential workers. And, you know, it's important to look at this one and I wanted to emphasize this one for you simply because, you know, we think of our fine folks in law enforcement, we think of the folks at Central Dispatch. But it's, you know, it, it's broader than that. You know, we've, we've had folks at nursing homes, hospital and home care settings, for example. Their services have been so critical and they place their own health at considerable risk in working, continuing to provide those important services. We've heard of folks at food production facilities who, you know, had to continue to go to work. We've needed them to, to, uh, keep the, the, the flu, food supply coming and, uh, that, you know, they've become sick in some situations and continuing to work and work in such close quarters and all the rest. Our childcare workers, certainly our educators and school staff, you know, we've had a great deal of discussion about that. We have awareness about that in our, our community. But also our social services and human services staff. But again, remember the folks at the grocery stores, you know, the postal service and all those folks. This is, this is a very important point that, that was emphasized, uh, in the documents, that that is these, these funds, you really must prioritize premium pay for lower-income workers. And often that's the food production facility workers, the farm workers, the grocery stores and restaurants. So must really, uh, emphasize and prioritize this premium pay for lower-income workers. And again, this is folks who have placed their health at risk, uh, by continuing to provide services to all of us during, uh, this, this really difficult period. We've been hearing a lot about this, investments in water and sewer infrastructure, uh, but also broadband. And here it's, uh, in areas that are currently unserved or underserved. And, uh, language that really resonated with me or just made sense to achieving that last mile connection to households and businesses. Now, this is exactly what we run into here, uh, in rural areas. And in fact, very interesting, I had mentioned to you that I was going to be participating and, and Chris as well uh, in a meeting of the, uh, managers to talk about what would it look like to, to bring broadband to these areas. And, you know, I learned then, and perhaps all of you already knew, but I learned then that, you know, these, these companies are coming through the city of St. Louis, Alma, Ithaca, and they're running this stuff uh, at no cost to the city. So the cities are getting wired. So then the question is, how do we, you know, what does that mean in terms of a collaborative effort? How does it get done and so forth? So, um, I, I don't know anything about any of that, but we have the next manager's meeting uh, soon, um, to, to talk about that, maybe tomorrow, to, uh, have our next discussion about what does that look like? We're bringing in someone who, uh, knows an awful lot about broadband and can talk with us a little bit about that. So, um, if we want to go, if you folks decide you want to throw some money at, uh, this very important broadband project, certainly, uh, fits in, you know, squarely in, in this criterion, but also in, in, uh, the others that I presented to you. We tough figure out as a practical matter, how does that get done? Do we collaborate with the other governmental units? I, I just don't know, but but that's the quick and dirty summary. And like I say, there are a hundred and thirty-four pages of an interim final rule. Um, I hope I have, um, saved you the wicked, wicked duty of going through and reading every page and every word of that. I think I've, I've pulled out, um, what is really going to help you. Now, I know that Commissioner Bunting had asked about, you know, what was the process for claiming these funds? You wanted the application for doing this and, you know, some other things. Um, or, or the criteria for use of these funds. So, um, you know, we've been planning to do that, of course, but, uh, so I've given you that. And Chris, if you're still online, I think that you are going to provide a few comments about what was the process? The, uh, uh, every bit of information about Chris, including his shoe size, is now in the possession of the federal government. Chris?
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. I spent an entire afternoon being interviewed and measured and photographed, um, by a third party before I could apply for the funds with the Department of Treasury. So it started with, uh, they, they took my driver's license and pictures of that. I had to go home and get my passport because I needed a second. I forget what they call it, second primary ID.
Yep.
I had to download an app that scanned my face. Then I had to send in a selfie. After that, I had to get on a video chat with this company and then show all of my IDs to, to them again so that they knew they were in my possession. And then finally, when I was approved, I took a picture of their IDs.
Stick it to them, buddy.
I did. It was an entire, uh, afternoon, uh, you know, I, I thought I was going to be on some secret service detail. But I did include the application. It was on one of the add-on, um, items that the clerk put on, on the web, so if anybody has any questions on that. It just has some basic, uh, when you can spend the money, how you can spend the money, but mostly, most of the stuff that Tracy just went through.
I'm still trying to figure out how to get out of screen share, but anyway, we certainly invite your questions. I, I will caution you that, uh, oh, thank you. Oh, Matt, I love you. Uh, I will, um, caution you that, uh, we've probably told you everything, uh, that we know. But, um, we can certainly take questions, look it up, but, um, that's what we know, folks.
Alrighty, very good. Thank you.
Wait, can we talk about, I mean, does this, uh, well, perhaps you need to digest this, but you know, I, 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 I do hope we can get some process information. For example, um, this issue came up at the Rotary meeting last week. And, uh, you know, and I told them what I knew about this. I, I did, uh, indicate that you folks had not yet decided on a process. And so I was a little bit cautious about what, what I said. I am going to go ahead and have a discussion with folks from CASA uh, this Friday morning, just to learn a little bit more. You folks write about it in the paper, I'm sure. Uh, but, you know, I'd like to do a presentation to Rotary. Um, I just don't know how much you folks want me talking about this and in what way. Um, and, you know, I, I, I work at your direction always, but certainly on this.
Yep.
Go ahead, Chris.
I, uh, you know, Tracy and I work together and everything, but we have different connections too, also throughout the county. So I also have different individuals or entities or departments, you know, curious. How do we, how do we go about talking to the board or do we talk to you? Do we talk to Tracy? So those are the types of things.
Alright, anybody have anything further?
So Angie, uh, you know, if you would continue to carry this on the agenda. I know that you folks will maybe digest this over the next, uh, a couple of weeks and, uh, perhaps we can talk about it again. Uh, meanwhile, you know, Chuck, if we have questions, we'll submit them to you and we'll just continue to use our, our best judgment on this.
Okay, very good. I believe we're ready to move on to the financial meeting, or finance meeting. I need a motion to, uh, recess this meeting and move into the financial meeting, finance meeting.
Bart?
The motion by, uh, Commissioner Bailey, support by Commissioner Smith. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, aye. Aye opposed, nay. Motion passed. There you go, Jan.
Okay, call this, uh, meeting to order and, uh, we'll do the finance, uh, administration report, cash balance and fact register. And, um, has everybody had time to look it over? And is there any questions? And Chris, do you have anything you'd like to add to it?
Well, yes, Jan, I, I am prepared to answer some of your questions that came up in the regular meeting, if I could start with those.
That would be great.
Okay, so what I did is, um, I downloaded
each day.
Is that MSHN being shared?
Yep, yep.
Very good. Okay, so this is the Midstate Health Network. These are the, the Midstate Substance, this is the, the Substance Commission. And we get this on a, on a quarterly basis. It comes from the, what's called the Cobal Hall Convention Facility, which is known as the Liquor Tax. Now, we get a distribution quarterly, uh, we got $15,000 and we sent half of that to them, uh, about seven, $7,500. And you ask why we budget so much? And, um, we budget, we budgeted it at $50,000 paid to them because in a typical year, that's what we would, we would pay them, uh, half of what we'd receive for this Cobal Hall. But because the buyers have been closed, there hasn't, you, the state hasn't been collecting as much liquor tax. So that's why we're not, that's why we didn't meet our budget last year. So this is what the bill looks like that we get once every three months. Do you have any more questions on that?
I'd like to have a copy of it if I could. I was wondering why it's, um, two different names, actually three different names. The name that was in the audit was MidSouth Substance Abuse with five counties. Is this five counties also?
Yes.
What are the counties?
Um, I don't have that in front of me, but that's what, uh, Commissioner Smith said.
I read them off to you.
Huh?
I read them off to you.
Okay, I'm, I'll be here tomorrow, uh, Chris. I'll stop in then, I can
Okay.
Get a copy. Okay.
Alright, and then you had discussed wanting to dig through your closet in order to find out how much money we'd sent MERS. I thought I would save you the time and anytime that you would like a financial report run, um, definitely ask me before you start digging, because these only take a, a, a minute or less to run.
On computer.
So.
I don't know how you think closets get cleaned out though, Chris, but you know.
Yeah, I've been cleaning my closet, yeah.
So since fiscal, fiscal year 2013, let's see, we got one, two. I did, I ran it for the last eight years here. Um, we've submitted $7.5 million and that's just our regular payments to MERS. That is not the amount that we sent in related to the bonded funds. So I believe it was.
Again, I, how much was that again?
Just under $7 million.
Over seven years, you said?
We got eight years here.
Eight years.
You can see where 2013, 2014, the state really started cracking down on pension funds that were not funded. Um, and so there were, MERS was required to make us pay more into it. You can see through 2016, we actually had to put in $2.5 million um, to meet the minimum requirements by the state. And that, I believe that's also the same year that, uh, the board decided or made the decision to bond. So that $2.5 million was submitted from the general fund and then another 6.5 from the bond that year. And then we drastically dropped in what the state is requiring us to deposit.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the history and this.
We don't, we don't pay any more money to them, do we, for the, for the MERS?
Yep. We pay in about $300,000 a year.
Pay over $2 million though. Yeah. We can buy it. It fluctuates every year based on the MERS.
I thought we were 100% funded.
Well, it, it, it varies. Um, you know, it's based on the markets. And a lot of times, well, our actuarial date is December 31st. And usually, unfortunately, that's like the worst time for the markets because people are, uh, selling their equities in order to get tax write-offs. Um, uh, Mr. Lemmerman, would you agree with that? That's probably the worst quarter to be judged on?
Yeah, cuz it's, it's what you're saying is called tax loss harvesting. So you sell your losers at the end of the year so you can, uh, cuz you can write off those losses.
Does anybody have any other, other questions related to, uh, our MERS contributions? I mean, or any other reports that you'd like in the future, be happy to provide. Just let me know.
Okay, yeah, it's easier to go through you. Thank you, Chris.
Absolutely.
Can I come tomorrow though? I'd like to, because I've been asked, well, one of them, Chuck and I were talking about it. Um, and I was telling him that, um, he said it was 6.5. And I said, no, I think we've paid in more than that in the last, since 2012, since the wind turbines came in. Before the wind turbines came in, we were behind, we didn't have the money to pay. That's why we talked about the bond. Then when that money started coming in, they took part of the money from the wind turbines and we also took out the bond. But I was under the understanding from, um, Ally, that we were 100% funded and that we didn't have to put any more money into the, into it.
Every year adjusts.
Yeah, every, I, I believe we're around 96% funded.
I'd agree with that. You're not 100%.
Um, you know, we fluctuated between 96 and 102 since I've been here, so it, it moves around, you know, based on how the investments are doing.
Uh-huh. I think they'd be doing really good. I know my stocks are from, Chris, mine are different. That's bonds. I'm in stocks. Okay, um, well, we can continue on with the, um, with the, um, reports.
Okay, so what I have before you now is, um, our cash balances for the general fund, delinquent tax fund, tax sale fees, residence denial interest. One thing that you will notice is our delinquent tax fund took a dip from 6.2 to 4.6. That's due to the settlement process that was performed by the treasurer. So you'll see that once a year. You see that in 2020 here, it went from 5 million to 2.8. Um, 2019, it was the month before when settlement was completed, 4.1 million dropped to 2.2. Does anybody have any questions related to cash balance?
Yeah, I have a question on that. That, no, that's the taxes that come in. You're saying that, um, $2 million didn't come in?
No, I'm saying that the delinquent tax fund settled with the local units. That means the, um, the treasurer bought all of the local unit's debt, their outstanding taxes. So now she will be collecting the taxes that are passed to.
Townships are made whole.
Mm-hmm.
Make the townships whole, then we in turn have tax sales.
Townships, cities.
Yeah.
Villages. Anybody that collects a millage or a tax is always made whole by the county.
Even the county departments, she reimburses.
We're still higher than the year before.
Correct.
So April to April, so we still have more money coming in. Okay. I did have questions on the checks, but I'll wait and talk to you tomorrow because there was too many. And, um, um, I'll go through it then with you.
The, uh, the April total looks like a traditional low point of the year. So that we're still at almost $9 million. Looks pretty good, doesn't it?
Yeah, for, for overall, we're, we're sitting in good shape. That is correct.
From last year, it looks like we're in real good shape. But we have a lot of new wind turbines too. Does anybody have any questions on the checks? I do, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go through them right. My, the questions I have are on the credit cards.
Well, now's the time, I guess, for the financial meeting. I, I don't think you should come in and take Christmas Day tomorrow and ask me about credit cards.
Well, there's several here. There was, I mean, I didn't want to take, easily said, come in, you know, and, and talk with them on it. Um, cuz there were several here. Um, credit cards for 3,000, um, you know, a lot of them for 3,000, 2,000. I was just wondering what was bought, but it was up that high.
I'm gonna have to actually pull the statements. Um, if you want, I wait till tomorrow, I can be more organized. I mean, otherwise, it'll take me a while to organize, uh, pulling the, the credit cards.
Yeah, you, don't make me copies. I'll just look and see what, what came in.
Chris, I had a few marked here. Uh, the, uh, April 21st for $4,500 to AMLGAMLLC. What's that?
Oh, I'm testing my memory, but I believe, I believe that came from Central Dispatch. What was the date one more time?
Uh, A M, A L G A M. The date is April 21st, uh, debit number 8419.
That is related to our GIS services.
It, it's what?
GIS.
Invoice for, yeah, updating the photos on, in GIS.
Okay, great. And then a little bit farther down the same date. Um, no, I don't need that one. Um, then the next page, uh, also the 21st. Uh, 8460, uh, for $4,040 and 1 cent. Max ORP, Max OR Plus LTD.
They provide our healthcare buyout plan. So we have a bill from Blue Cross Blue Shield and then we pay them to provide an additional amount of coverage for our employees.
And then the very next check, uh, 4551 Michigan Consulting and then, uh, environmental, it looks like, or something like that.
As far as landfill reports and monitoring.
Okay. And I'm assuming the very last check, uh, payment of 429 to Yi and Yo, uh, that's for the, uh, audit?
Yes, that is for the audit.
Okay, thank you.
Which is yours? My audit's $10,000.
10, 6.
Oh, yeah, okay. How about Resurrection Life Church?
Maybe a restitution or something.
Okay.
Where am I gonna find that at, Jan? What date?
Oh, it is going to be, uh, 4/9/21.
Oh, that was, uh, that came from the delinquent tax fund. That was, uh, some sort of tax adjustment.
The Resurrection Life Church?
Correct.
Okay, another thing you have on here, you have Gretchen County Registered Deeds. You have a lot of those on here, 1,500, 1,500, then you've got $1,470, $1,440, $1,470, 1,500, uh, what is rich? I've never seen them out here.
Terry, can you explain those better than I can? Um, why you, uh, provide registered deeds with that cash, it's for reimbursement for something?
It is, it, well, or it's for, uh, forfeitures that we have to have reported this time of year. That's what that is, or some, some of them are, uh, forfeiture redemptions if someone has paid their taxes. That's what those big amounts you're seeing are for.
I didn't think Resurrection Life would pay taxes.
I thought you were looking at registered deeds.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry. I forgot that I moved on. Uh, okay, sorry about that. Okay, I've got it now. No, I'm, I'm, I've looked, when you were saying that, I was looking at Res- uh, Resurrection Life Church again. Um, I had a couple of other questions here too. I was trying to skim while you're telling me stuff. Um, there was one more in here. The other ones were mostly going to be, um, the credit cards. And I usually take a look at those anyway, so I can just come in and skim through them real quick. I was just curious, cuz there were so many that was so expensive, that was right up there. We have a limit on that. I was thinking 2,500 was our limit.
It depends. It can be set. That, tho- those amounts can be varied, but you know, again, on these individual checks, Chris and Beck, you're here every day, can answer these questions. And of course, credit cards, we review them as well, so. Um, you know, you have, you have your screening here, but we're here every day.
Uh-huh.
Alright, one other thing I noticed, Chris, uh, uh, there was three voided checks on one page and three on another page, but we, I thought we were gonna report, uh, details on those.
If you, if you look at what I submitted to Angie to be published, that is up there. So if you look at, at, look at the TV screen, you see those up there.
Okay, I'll check that out then. Thank you.
It's in the back. You guys just requested a.
Yeah, it's right there.
You've got it there. Okay, alright. Okay, I got you. Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Oh, no, I see it. We got it here. Okay.
Uh, Chuck, I wasn't paying attention. When you were asking, did you ask about the one for 421? It's AMA L G A M?
Yes.
I thought you did.
Yes.
Got 4,500, okay.
That's amalgam, and that's one of the companies that, uh, provide support services for the GIS.
Oh, um, never mind. I was on the wrong line here. Never mind. I was on the wrong line here. Um, okay, I think that's about it, except for um the credit card ones. Does anybody else have any questions?
What is it you want to look at on the credit cards? You want to look at like the?
I'm just curious to see what they were buying it through. I thought there was a limit at twenty five hundred and there, there's a lot of them that were some. Let me see if I can find them.
Yeah, I can tell you like at the sheriff's office, we have credit cards, we have to go out and buy supplies for the jail. Stuff like that, so we use credit cards for that. Um. We just switched credit cards. We went from into U S Bank um to the First National Bank. We just switched the cards and then went with the county ones. We didn't have a different bank for ours. We ran into a snag with that. Wooden check on the top. They said they didn't get paid and then we showed that it. Cancel it. And uh it was a mess, but so that's why we switched cards.
So what bank are you with?
The U S National Bank of Omaha, I think is who we have now.
Okay, that's the one that's with too. There's several. Okay, what is, I'm, this is one oh one department. I was thinking I had. What? Well, these could be yours.
No, we just got our cards. The most of ours.
Well, these aren't yours?
No, we just got the cards at the end of the month.
Oh, okay. These are, these are national, First National.
Now we're all gonna be under the same cards.
Okay.
Yeah, some of these larger amounts are related to, um, we just outfitted the the courtrooms, the jury boxes with. Panels to ensure, you know, safety once jury trials start up again. So, and we do have a couple individuals that have an authorized higher limit. And uh Kaylin, being one of them, who is our procurement officer, because people will come to her. Um, from different departments, asking her to procure some of the stuff, so.
Okay.
So I'll have them ready.
I I have to ask, uh, uh, April twenty six, twenty twenty one. What's the dollar eighty five to Rakish Sexina?
It came out of the delinquent tax fund, so that would have been an overpayment. She would have overpaid her taxes. We have to issue a refund. We have to issue a refund. We can't let the overpayment set.
I was just asking, he had told me once he was opening up a free clinic for uh indigent people. And I, I just wondered if it was somehow related to that.
Okay, I have a couple here. The econo- the. The Economic Development Corporation for two hundred and fifty thousand. Did you ask about that one?
It's Greater Gretchen.
That's greater. Okay, because I saw one here for Greater Gretchen. A little further up. And then you've got another one here for Underground Security Company. Is that like a big secret underground security thing?
Yes, it actually is. They store documents in like uh, they, there's, it's just like a salt mine or something. They store documents down there.
For years.
Okay, that's, that's good enough, Chris. So anyway, we should continue on. We got a lot here going on. So revenue and expenditures would be the next thing we will look at. I like how you're doing this, revenue expenditures too, Chris.
Thank you. Just wait, Terry's got some new reports for you too.
Okay, okay. She's next. Does anybody have any questions on the expenditures and revenue? How about you, Sam? Do you have any questions?
No, they're all in balance, time of the year stuff. Get a couple of, just a couple of red marks.
How about you, Commissioner Bailey?
Also.
Okay, how about you? And Mr. Duffy?
I'm good.
Okay. Let's continue on. Treasures report. You patiently have been waiting.
Hello, everyone. Um, I have submitted my revenue. And ex- and uh investment reports, the, and the transfer activity, those you've seen many times before. My receipt listing, which is the report that I used to submit that showed just all of the revenue that was brought in. Um, I have changed that up and it now shows by fund, which I think will be a little easier to understand. I won't say more interesting, but maybe a little easier for you to understand. I, I find it that way, and I think it matches with, with Chris's report a little bit better. This way.
Oh, I agree. It does look better like that.
I think it makes it a little easier to, you know, to understand and see where everything's going rather than just a list.
Terry, actually, this is the way it used to be done, yours.
Oh, really?
Well, thank you, yeah. It looks nice too. It's easy to read.
The ones that I uh followed when I came in were the other receipt listings, so um I had never seen these before.
This is kind of how Mary Sullivan used to do it.
Okay, all right. Well, good, I'm glad.
Uh, everybody that comes in has their own way, so, but anyway, it looks nice.
Well, I just, um. I want to give you what makes sense to you guys and and what's easier to understand, so. I'm sure we'll be adjusting for a little while.
Does anybody have any question? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna ask if anybody had any questions, same thing you were saying.
Okay, does um anybody have any questions on the treasures report, the investment revenue?
I just have a question. How's your office going, Terry?
I'm sorry?
How, how's your training and stuff in your office going?
It's going well. Uh, we are all cross-training, so uh if somebody um needs to step out or, you know. Can't be here, everyone else knows how to do what they do. Um, we're learning a lot and it's, it's going well, Sam.
Terry, do you um, like when you don't know how to do something, do you get ahold of MAC or another county or?
Yep, those, I'm on uh two different listservs, which the treasures throw things out in email and say, hey, have you guys ever heard of this? Or hey, how do you guys handle this? And it's uh, there's a lot of great information and. People, people answer back right away. MAC is another good one. Uh, but the listservs really have a lot of good information. There's a lot of treasures on there that are new. And there's a lot of treasures on there that have been around for a long time. So the treasures, uh, like myself, that say, hey, what do you do with this? They're almost instantly, you know, the, the ones that have been around for a while are coming back saying, this is what we've learned, this is what we do, and it's, it's wonderful.
Um, I'm on the board for MSU Extension and um they had a meeting a month ago and they're promoting a lot of um. Um, like I'll say schooling. Um, they, we had one for the commissioners, any new commissioners could take. Either go online or they would come in and, you know, go over all the um responsibilities. Things that they should know or should be aware of and all that type of thing. They didn't say anything about the treasures office, but I'm sure, I mean. We were all commissioners that sit on that board, but I'm sure they do it for the treasures too.
They do. I have been involved in that and uh also some of the M M T A training. I've gone through that basic. Uh, the Basic Institute this year, plus there was the one, four new elected officials that I went uh through a couple months ago, so yep.
Oh, that's good. Okay.
To Terry, you were mentioning, uh, is that the Treasures Association you were talking about, you being able to back and forth with them or?
Yes, there's, um, yes, there's two of them. There's the M A C T, which is the Michigan Association of County Treasurers. And then there's the M M T A, which is the Michigan Municipal Treasures Association.
Oh, great. Okay, good.
I think one of the biggest accomplishments that we, we've had upstairs is Becky and Cindy were working together on the P R E program. And I don't think either one of them really understood or liked what they saw with how it was operating. You know, um, on paper, not in the county, but how it was being recorded. And so they brought that to Terry and I, and uh we, we basically rewrote that program and. Terry has procedures for it now, so. There's been a lot of things through training that are, that's getting, you know, redone up there and then Terry's doing, you know. Grabbing a hold of, of most of what she needs to get and reworking it so that everybody understands it.
That's good.
Thanks, Chris.
Um, okay, then let's continue on, because is there um? Any other financial business that we'd like to talk about this evening?
Yeah, I have a concern.
Yes.
Um, and about, um, I just had some people call me about, from a meeting that you were to at M M R. About money missing and things like that, and you had two state policemen working on this, and I'm just wondering. I think you ought to bring us all up to light about this, so we don't hear it out in the community.
Um, no comment. Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I don't know.
There, let me, the only thing I'll say, there was a reason why we changed the board and wanted a new um, uh. Chairperson, and it was a lack of transparency. And I had, and I've said that many, many times to you, there's a lack of transparency, asking questions, not answering them. And so that kind of, that's what got it started. It's um, when I asked a question, you couldn't answer it. I knew you knew the answers. And asked for different things in here and um, just was never told, so little by little, I. And you knew that once before, uh George, you knew back when um. Uh Jeff Hoff was here, there was questions about, one of them, Mary Sullivan brought it to us, about the two hundred and fifty thousand that was missing from permits. And again, I just recently asked you.
Do you not recall that at all? I don't recall anything about that.
Yeah, that was given to the Attorney General's Office. Uh, another thing too, I mean, there's, I, there's a lot of things. Um, I've been on the board twenty years, and you guys disrespect anything I ask to you. You just kind of blow me off. You, you want to argue with me, you want to shut me up. Um, and I mean, I have as much right to talk on this board as anybody does. And I, and I, I like, I, I, I'm the one to talk to you about becoming a commissioner. And um, when we hired Tracy, or you guys hired Tracy, because I voted against it. Um, it was made very clearly that she was only gonna answer to one person. Now, uh, when you have an administrator, she made it very clear, and a lot of it was like I was not gonna get a paper copy. Um, I had to go through Tim to get a paper copy, and there's just been a lot of, you know, you start adding up all the little things, they start becoming big. And um, little by little, just, it's like our, not having a finance meeting any longer. It wasn't until you guys took Michelle in the back room over there and had that meeting. And you, you do know that that attorney taped that whole thing, and Tim Lambrecht did admit that you guys were harassing her. And that's why I told you, you needed to pay that bill. It's all on tape. He's got it on tape. And there's just a number of little things that's gone on that's not been right. And um, I feel like I'm responsible. I've been sitting on this board. And for me to get off the board, I feel like I walk away from something I know about. So little by little, I'm. I'm gonna ask questions. I want to see the proof of it, and it is what it is. I have that right. And it's my responsibility as a commissioner, if I feel that there's something wrong there. And I've tried to talk to you guys about this. When I've talked to you, you and Tim and Sam both, I mean, you guys come after me like pit bulls. And I just, I just got tired. I knew I had to get the board changed, little by little. Um, get somebody different on this board where we can ask questions. And what, I started to tell you, it wasn't until that time. That that attorney told you it was against the law, state law, that we had to have a finance meeting. So you put it on the back of a full board meeting.
That was never the case. I'm sorry, Jan, a lot of these things you're saying are coming out of.
Exactly. Well, you know what I feel about this? I feel that. If there wasn't a problem, you would, you would have brought it out into the open. You would have talked about it. It's just like the reports. We used to get a report from all the different departments. That was all, but no longer did we get them. It wasn't until we got on the board and I said, well, we want a report from the animal shelter, or we want a report. From Commissioner N A Jane, and now all of a sudden we're starting to get these reports. And also, you know, we used to have what, a half hour, forty five minute meetings? How can, our meetings, I've been on the board for a long time, used to be hours on a meeting to do the business of the county. But it got to the point where I didn't know anything was going on. And I had to tell you, it wasn't until my townships came to me and asked me about stuff. They said, Jan, what about this? And I go, I don't know, because, and I'd come back and ask the question and still couldn't get an answer.
Well, that's not what the story I get from your townships.
I can tell you, I've been, I've been elected, what is it, eleven times now? That tells you something there, because I don't do a lot of, I don't have to do a lot of door to door. Everybody knows me. And I've got several emails that I saved and letters and notes, telling me they were glad that the board has changed.
Oh, good for you.
But, you know, George, I think the world of all you guys. In fact, I'm at church and, you know, I love everybody. I like, I, I like you, George. I mean, I sat at your restaurant and had coffee with you, and I told you, why don't you be a county commissioner? And you turn right around and you treat me terrible. As a person and also as a commissioner. Not at any point have I been able to sit down and talk to you, um, like we are right now. It's been usually screaming and yelling. Well, these guys have witnessed it right there on the board. You screaming at me and, and carrying on and stuff, and, you know, you could have said, you know, Jan, let's sit down and talk about this, but not one time have you done it. And I feel bad about what I've, that I've had to push that as far as I'm, that I pushed it. It's the last thing I wanted to do. Last thing I want to do is to have to do all that I'm doing right now, but I'm gonna continue on and.
How was I asked if you do something and you say something that is not true? And you have no evidence of it.
Give me.
And you better not say it anymore, because I'm telling you.
I hear it again.
Everybody's asking, where is the money from the wind turbines? Where is fourteen million dollars that came in?
It went from, now, since I've been here, it went from eight. To nine, to twelve, now it's fourteen.
That's what it was. We just got, we got the papers. Chuck, he uh redid the whole paper over and showed that we had fourteen million.
Over since two thousand twelve.
We've taken in fourteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we, we tell this gentleman we disperse it all out. We don't get to keep that fourteen, we don't get to forty. It disperses out to everybody.
The money that came in from the wood turbines at the time the people put them in, the money was supposed to come into the county to redo things in the county. That they needed. The question, I mean, I got it on my cell phone even. They don't want their name shown, but I can show you. Where they say that um, that they hope that I'll find where this.
But you know something, Jan, I mean, I don't know who this gentleman was here tonight. He, he come here with the impression that we took in forty million dollars a year on, on wind turbines. And until we explained it to this gentleman that we keep what, what's the percentage we get of that? It, it's minimal as far as, you know, and that all goes out to schools and everything else. We're just, we're just a conduit for that funds and write those checks back. And so he comes, and if you tell people we take in fourteen million dollars and we don't, we don't know where the money is, we've handed it out to all these people.
We have.
Don't you think the government is looking at this?
Um, let me tell you this, we get a paper, again, I get this from Greater Gretchen. I gave one to um. Gave one to John, I gave one to Chuck, and I've got one. And it shows on that paper altogether, forty nine million dollars has come into the county.
Yep.
And then you break it down, that's broke down, and it's kind of confusing to read it. But Chuck took, I don't know how many days, and he went through and he listed who got what money.
The county says.
We'll be glad to give you.
Says Breckenridge Schools got this much money. It says Merrill Fire Department got this much.
Yeah, it does.
It says on that on those sheets.
And that'll. I was just using the summary numbers. I thought it was easier to.
Yeah, but if you took the summary numbers, I mean, the county gets, we don't get, keep that forty nine million. I mean, it goes to everybody.
Well, that's, but what I'm saying to you is that this stuff should be, if we would have talked about it in the meeting, it would have been in the newspaper and people would have.
It's in the newspaper.
Talked about.
It is, it's in a newspaper. I mean, they put the sheet in there how well they were, if you, they put page five on their website.
I just can't believe it.
A lot of people don't have computers, Sam.
But, but it was, it's been in the Herald. I see it every time that the Greater Grashit gives us the report.
Nothing.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
In all due respect, Jan, you talked about how you weren't transparent to the board over the years. See, I'm just asking you a pointed question.
Yeah.
You said no comment. That is no transparency there.
That is what I'm doing. I'm not at liberty to talk about it, so.
You know, Jan, when I, when I first come on the board, you had the Attorney General.
That is not being transparent. If there is money missing off this board for the last ten years, you've been on this board for ten years. You have a right to the taxpayers of this county to make sure it was right over them ten years. Now you're coming forward. You can be criminally liable for that as a board member.
Well, yeah, I, I know, exactly. That's why, that's why I've got other people involved.
Wrongdoing without facts, that's my thesis. You can be criminally charged for that.
I had, let me put it this way, the, the evidence that I took into the Attorney General's office and also to another area, both have, as, the, both of them say, we need to do a forensic audit. That's what they want, because um, there is, there is, how do they say, um, I can't think of the word, um, discrepancies in how this money has come in and where it's gone. But they're not, they don't, that's not, but they do.
Who's they, Jan?
I'm not going to tell you.
See, that's the problem. You talk about transparency, but you don't want to talk.
You're, you're, you know something, you guys have sat on this board and bullied me for the last four or five years, Sam, really. I mean, it's just like the bill that we owed to Clark Hill. And I told you guys, you would rather pay ten thousand dollars more to not pay a bill. And you do know that if it goes, it's, it is going to go into collection. And what it does, that'll stop us from getting any bonds for a while, which is probably a good thing. But you will have to go a long period of time before this county will get bonds again.
Yeah, first of all, I won't read the question. And second of all, you don't pay for employees. If, if he wanted to go hire a lawyer, because, or he's not an employee, but if you, take that back, if you have an employee who hires an attorney to defend her, you don't pay that out of county taxpayers' dollars. You do not pay that. I do not pay.
You guys, not you, but Tim and George harassed a treasurer.
That's your opinion.
I haven't admitted that. Well, I'm just saying, and also, that attorney sent you a letter saying that she can hire an attorney because she was a treasurer, and she hate, could use the money out of the treasures.
But not for courthouse, but she wasn't doing courthouse business. She's doing her personal business. She was hiring an attorney for herself.
Did you guys, what proof do you have? What proof did you have?
Of what?
Right here, Jan, right here. Last year's treasurer report. Here's some, here's some discrepancies right here.
What I'm going to say to you is that this, this is all going to end up in court anyway.
Yeah.
And what it does, you guys, I, I have a lot of faith in what I'm doing, because I know, I know this, I didn't know this, Mr. Um, Lawler, until this all happened. But I can tell you, it's a big firm and, and they mean business and it is what it is, so. Um, we'll just follow this through and.
Well, I'm still back about, what happens is when you say that money is missing.
You need to get an attorney, but you do not pay out of the county money. Get an attorney and do what you need to do, just like me.
You're not hiring attorneys. You're calling Yo and Yo and they're billing us.
No, I've got somebody else. I, I go to the Attorney General's office. You don't have to pay nothing there.
I, I think we got a bill in here from Yo and Yo when you're calling them up and asking them questions. I mean, we, we passed this.
Anybody, any of the commissioners.
We don't have a right, we don't have a right. I do not have a right to call an attorney in Elma and ask him opinion that we've, something we've done here. I do not have that right.
I'm the tre, I'm the finance treasurer or the chair of finance, and I have the right to call Yo and Yo and ask him any questions that I want. That's, what do you think you paid all that money for? And she told me to call her anytime I wanted. And so, and I will call her anytime I want. I'm the chair, finance chair. You had an opportunity to be the vice chair. You didn't want to, and so did you, George. Neither one of you wanted to be a part of the group. You could have said, I said, well, Chuck said, uh, did he have a nomination for vice chair for finance? Neither one of you guys stepped up. Finally, I said, well, John, why don't you do it? Because I knew he was in finance and he'd be good at it.
A different night.
But again, you're sitting here wanting to bully me and.
I'm not wanting to bully you. I, I'm telling you, when I hear that you have state police investigating us, investigating this board, I want to know about it.
Well.
And I want to know what, where, where they come from.
You can want to know all you want to, but Sam, you got a big history of treating me brutally.
Not at all.
Yes, yes. Uh, well, Chuck, what did you say? I mean, he sat right here when you guys ganged up on me and, and said it. And I got to tell you that um, you saw, it's been on YouTube. Uh, George sitting there and saying, oh my God, oh my God, you know, I'm trying to ask questions and.
Yeah, you ask questions like a treasure. You got any houses for sale, little cute houses that I could buy? You asked that about three times here every time we have a sale.
Why not?
Yeah.
What is.
You're not a real estate agent.
I ask her, is they're going to put it up for auction in here? Why wouldn't I?
How, how that's done is people go and look at the board and see what's available for auction, and then you go out and look at the property, and then you bid it.
Sam, you're used to um, ordering people around.
Not at all.
I'm just, I, I, I'm sorry, I'm not going to ask for your permission to do anything. I do not owe you nothing, nor George, or, or John, or Chuck. I do not ask for permission to do anything. I am my own boss. And so far, I've made it through this far. And you know, Mike, I'm going to tell you, I'm very distant, I know that you dislike me, and that's okay.
Never said that, Jan. I've known you.
Yeah, this is just business.
I've never said that.
Well, just, I know that you, like, different times that you've been on the TV, you've sort of sided in with them, so I assumed that you were, and you are kind of taking their side.
You, you, you don't know me very well. I'm the most level-headed person you ever met. Sure, I did.
Well, I had, I've always respected you. I helped you run for your office and um, I think for a long time, you, you've sat here and watched some of it. For a long time, I'd ask the simplest questions in here. Nobody says a word. Chuck Murphy sat right here, right over there. And how many times did they, I mean, brutally, you guys go after me. Not just when you, just like now, this is probably the first time, and I don't know when, that you guys have sat down and just, in a nice tone, talked to me. And I think it's sad, first of all, as a fellow commissioner on the board, and as a friend to both of us, that, that you treated me the way you have. I mean, it's.
Jan, I tell you what, I, I don't.
And I got to tell you something.
Poorly.
Huh?
I've asked you questions. I've asked, asked you questions. I've been frustrated at times. You ask the same thing over and over. Um, I think you come unprepared sometimes.
No, I ask questions like, how many wind turbines do we have? And you know why I've asked that question? Because I've sat in, first of all, I met, this guy called me several years ago, it'd be back maybe five, six years ago. It was in February, and he wanted me, and you were on the board at that time, and he wanted me to be a liaison between these townships and the county. And I said, well, what are the townships? He goes, I'll email them to you. And I got this. So he emailed them to me, and it was George and your district. So I emailed back and I said, I would be glad to, but it's not my district. And I don't want to go into somebody else's district. I did not want to go to your meeting or George's meetings. And so anyway, we got to talking on the telephone, back and forth. And one day, it was in the wintertime in February, and I said to him, I go, by the, and I had called him for something, and I said, by the way, how many wind turbines do we have? And he goes, two hundred and forty. And I said, no, we don't. We only have a hundred and eighty eight. But I was, I thought maybe we might have a couple more than a hundred and eighty eight. He goes, no, you got two hundred and forty. And I said, well, we're not getting paid for that many. And he said, well, I, he, and I got his card, I got the emails and everything. And he said, I'll check on it. I'll call you back on Monday. I never heard again from him. But also, the conversation, he told me, he said, out of every hundred and twenty five wind turbines that you get, the county brings in a eight point three million dollars. That's all, all there. And I, that's, I mean, I've got all these papers and stuff. Chuck would tell you, I gave it to him to read, and I've even given it to John to read. And so then, a couple of years, and this is Wheeler Township asked me about it. That's how it all got started, was Wheeler Township. And so then I'm out at Bethany Township, and they're doing something out there, but they have these, an attorney was there, and the gal from Chicago was there uh, from D T E. And I said, how many wind turbines do you have? Because this was an issue by now, because Wheeler Township said that they had more. They had more wind turbines than what was being recorded. So then I asked this gal who's right from Chicago, and she told me, she goes, you've got two hundred and forty four wind turbines. I said, no kidding? I said, will you write that down? She wrote it on a sheet of paper for me. And then she also emailed me and told me that's how many we had. At the time.
Your theory is that we have two hundred and forty four, we're getting paid for a hundred and eighty.
I don't know.
Somebody's stealing the money from the others.
Never, I've never been able to talk to anybody about it because of the fact that I bring it up.
Excuse me, Jan, you have been to Greater Grashit on several occasions. They've tried, and Casey has done her level best to sit down and go through everything for you.
Yep.
And then you go through the equalization department, and they've done their level best to show you everything.
We just said that.
And you still don't want to comprehend it, or you can't comprehend it by the other. I don't.
Well, I, I got to tell you that um, there's also somebody else that has a map and who told me at the time that I said we had a hundred and eighty eight. He goes, I got a map and you got a whole lot more than a hundred and eighty eight. So that was three people that had told me that.
The map that you saw was proposed sites. They weren't sites per se. They were the proposed ones that they may, they may, they put two or three in an air, a site on the map, and you may only put one windmill somewhere in that map.
Well.
Those are, those are reconstruction maps.
The other thing is this, is that I've already gone on G I S, and I've already recorded the first hundred and eighty eight of them, and there is more than a hundred and eighty eight. Um, so I've got those recorded. I'm going to do the rest of them that's out on this side and also Pine River. And then I'm going, eventually we'll have them all done, and then, then we'll know.
If you walk across the street, they can tell you exactly how many we get.
I've, they've tried to explain it to her.
I'm just, I got to tell you, I know.
Accept the facts. She wants to accept.
Wheeler Township told me they had two parcels with.
Experiences.
Two, two wind turbines on each parcel. That's what Wheeler, and they did. I went out there and looked at them. They had two.
Jan, I don't know what, I don't know what the basis of your thoughts are here.
I'm just.
If you have a hundred and eighty, if you're concerned, we only have a hundred and eighty eight, and you're saying we have more, I mean, these are not, these are not pens I could put in my pocket that you can't see it.
I know.
I mean, you could walk around and count these things. So what I'm saying is, so you're saying we got a hundred and eighty eight, and we're going, getting paid for a hundred and eighty eight. And so then sixty seven wind turbines, money is coming in and going someplace else. That's what your theory is.
I, you know what, I, I haven't really done a theory. I, in fact, I got to tell you, I went to uh, well, Kurt Giles from St. Louis, and him and I went out, and I showed him, and he said, Jan, he took me in, he goes, this is what you got to do. Each wind turbine has a number on it and an address. So that's what I'm doing. I'm going to do the addresses. But the reason I say there's more because Wheeler Township told me, he said, and I went out there. Two, and then there was others, two wind turbines on a parcel, and that's where we come up with, there's only about, there's only ten more. There was.
We're getting paid for less?
I don't know. I don't even know what we were getting paid. I didn't even, I did not know how much we were getting paid until Don Scher retired, and he passed it out at the uh, county, we had that, what is it called? The Township uh, Hall Meeting out at Pine River. And they passed out this paper, and I'm looking through it, and there it was. It told exactly how much we were getting. And I thought.
For you.
So I only got it when.
Let me understand this. So every township that has windmills, and every township has an assessor. And they go out and they assess every windmill in that township, because they all have addresses, and they have to physically meet them. Then they go back and they, they give the treasurer that information. The treasurer then sends the tax bill to either consumers or D T E. All right?
Hi.
End of story.
But I mean, if, if Pine River Township, if they're getting them all counted, I get a new assessor.
Townships.
If they got fifty of them in there and you're only counting thirty, they're getting beat out of twenty windmills.
If you have an assessor that goes in his township, he knows where every windmill is in his township.
All I'm going to say is, how do you explain, this guy that told me was the vice president, vice president of something at, in Grand Rapids, D T E. And, and also the gal from Chicago at the time. And then also, I mean, I'm just saying, and also, I went up on a plane twice and flew over and took a video of everything. And we counted uh, some in Pine, and they didn't have the wind turbines up, but they had the cement end. So I don't know. I, I'm telling you, I don't know. That's why I've been working on it. I've been working on it for eight years.
What are you trying to find out? I guess.
I'm just answering, I'm just answering my township's questions.
And your question was, what's your question?
They say that they got more wind turbines than what it's showing and, and which money are we getting? See, I ask you guys these questions all the time.
I, I will call Jerry Roadie in the morning and I will, I will ask him, because before you have sat right in the speeding. And you say Wheeler Township hasn't got, or yeah, Wheeler Township hasn't got a clue how many, how many, how much money they're getting off the windmills.
They did. He told me. I asked him, I said, how much?
Jan, I'm going to tell you right now, stop right there. Jerry Roadie and I are friends, and we've talked.
That's okay.
Jerry puts it right on his own uh, paper that, that the board gets for their budget, and the windmill money is, he pulls it right out. He doesn't even put it in personal.
I, when I took him.
Right there. So don't tell me he doesn't know. He knows. He's known forever.
Jan, you sat here one night, you said Kevin Beeson just gets a check and he has no idea how much he's getting. I called Kevin the next day. I said, Kevin, you don't understand how much money you're getting? He laughed. He said, I know how much I'm getting in two years from now.
Oh, so Kevin Beeson, the only one I knew was Jerry.
No, you said, he sat here in a meeting, he said, Kevin Beeson got a check. And I know, I know, just Kevin is from Greater Grashit. I don't know really anything about him. But I called him, because he's the supervisor. And then he said, he laughed, and he said, you're not even his, his representative. I don't know where he's even, he's Pine River or something.
No, he's uh.
He's your guy. But Kevin said to me, he just laughed, he said, yeah, you asked, you asked that question, but he, he knows how much money he's getting two years from now and five years from now.
Yeah, and Kevin knows, he knows.
But you said he didn't know. He just gets a check and they take. He has no idea how much they're going to get until the check comes.
When, at the same time that I talked to, well, Jerry asked me, he was the one that said, how many wind turbines do we have? And then I asked him one day when I was out there, I said, how much money do you get for the wind turbines? He goes, I don't know. And so when I took him, the first sheet, Don Scher passed out those papers, I made a copy of it, I took it out there to him, and he said, oh, he goes, I've always wondered. Now, maybe he didn't want me to know, but I also got to tell you that everybody around there knows me, and they all vote for me, and I put my signs in all their yards. And they've said, they asked me how much money comes in, and I said, I don't think Jerry knows, because he told me he didn't know. Maybe he doesn't want them to know. I don't know. I'm just telling you.
They would know as a township board.
No, this is people that live out there, that live in the community. I asked him, I go, why don't you go to the meetings? You know, I got to tell you, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to be in everybody's battle. I'm just, you know, people ask me questions, I go, why don't you go to the township? So.
But I mean, if you leave somebody the impression that we give forty seven million dollars and we just get to keep it off of two hundred turbines.
No, that, that's enough. I've never seen.
That gentleman right there, just, he thought we got to keep forty seven million dollars wherever it was.
Well, he might have seen one of those papers. Did he ever see that paper?
No, he hadn't. But he didn't know where the money went.
I've never, I don't think, I, I've never talked to him about how much money. That's Ferris. I, I know.
I mean, if you're, and you're telling people that you're not getting paid for all your turbines, because I counted them, and you got fifty of them, and they're only paying you for thirty.
I had to.
The guy who's running the township and their assessor doesn't know how much they're taxing them for, I'd be getting some new people. Because like I say, it's not like an Indian. If you have a small township, and you got fifty units there, you can see these babies from a long distance away.
You know Jerry well enough that.
Yes, I do.
He was, if that's the case, he would do that. If he's, if he's unsure about it. But I'm just telling you the things that he'd asked me.
Not unsure of what he's.
And I got to tell you, I have emails from him too. I got, I have emails from everybody.
Those emails.
I will show you the emails.
I would like to. I'd like to.
I've got the emails where he wrote in to um, uh, or he, he emailed them to the treasurer, or I mean, the administrator. And when he, when he, when she wrote back to him, he wrote, and then he sent it to me and said, this is wrong. I've got more than this. I got that, I've got it. You've seen it, have you?
Who said it was wrong, you got more than this? Jerry?
Jerry.
Jerry knows how many windmills he's got then, right? He just told me he didn't.
He did. He knows how many he's got. He said the county is putting him down for less wind turbines.
How can that be? Your tax.